Board this hearing tonight. Make sure it's working and it is. Okay. So tonight, we have four matters on. My name is Jocelyn Campbell and I'm the attorney, but it doesn't matter. I'm Chair of the zoning board of appeals for Nahat. And we're going to hear your matter tonight. For Mr. Miletis first, and that is for Four Copper Beach Lane. And before we get started, we have a couple of housekeeping type things that we have to do. One of them is, is I need the board members to tell me if they reviewed the minutes from the May 3 meeting that I sent around today. If they had a chance, if they could, somebody could bring a motion to approve those minutes. That'd be great.
I'll make a motion to approve the outstanding minutes that Mr. Raworth put together.
Okay, thank you. You want to second that?
Yeah, David McCool, I'll second that motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, great. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Your call, please.
Peter Barber, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin? We can't hear you, Caitlin.
She's on.
Try turning up your volume.
She's.
So Jocelyn Campbell, aye, by the way. That's four out of five, so that motion passes for that purpose.
Give us a thumbs up, Caitlin, if you approve.
I'm wondering if her speakers are not, I'm sorry, her microphone is not turned on. Sometimes, even though you're not muted, your microphone might not be turned on.
Right. Can you hear us, Caitlin?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you call in on your phone? Do you need the number? Okay. Just take your cell phone and call up. And we can at least, and you can put it on speaker and then it'd just be like you're, you know, it'd be like the same thing. Caitlin's first time joining tonight as a voting member.
She's a silent member.
It's all right, take your time. Yes, I'll send you the dial in one second.
Can you hear now?
Uh oh. Yes.
Yeah.
Somebody else has their, somebody else is using a dual, because I was echoing as well.
Right. So now Caitlin, you need to disable your microphone?
I'm muted on my computer.
Mute.
Then you need to shut off your cell phone, if that's the case.
I just unmuted to talk.
Okay, well, there's a way to do it. If you look over to the left and if you click on where it says mute, right, with the little cursor next to it, you click on that, there's an option for switch to phone audio. And they'll give you a little number to key in, so that we don't have that echo all night. Bottom left of your computer, where it says mute, to the right of that, there's a little up cursor like thing, press that, and it'll say switch to phone audio. Okay? See that?
I see that, I see that.
Okay. Then you click on that.
Did that work? I think it worked.
All right, good, 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 good.
Sorry that took so long, everyone.
It's okay, it's okay. Those things happen, everybody has to get on there, you know, so it's okay. All right, so let's get started. It is now a little after five, I think it's like 5:05.
Seven.
What I'm gonna do is we're gonna start with 34th Copper Beach Lane first. I'm going to read in the governor's order and the advertisement for tonight's hearing. So a notice was published in the Lynn item, and it was, it sounds like the public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals on Monday, May 17, via remote technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And we're conducting our meeting via Zoom, everybody got the information. Our first meeting is on the petition filed by Richard Miletis for the property located at Four Copper Beach Lane, Nahat, Mass, seeking a variance. The inspector of buildings has denied the building permit because the proposed accessory building is in violation of Section 5.03 zoning bylaws of the town of Nahat, where the proposed left side setback is three feet, where the minimum allowed is 10 feet. And the proposed rear setback is three feet, where the minimum allowed is 20 feet. Okay. So now the way, what's going to happen next is we're going to, I'm gonna introduce the board members, and I'll explain the hearing process, which really is just that our counsel or you would, or the applicant would present their case. And then we will have questions and comments, and then we will hear, see if anyone's here to speak in favor or in opposition. We will then deliberate the matter and then take some motions and make a decision hopefully to see. Okay? So introducing the board members that we have before us tonight, we have myself, Jocelyn Campbell, Peter Barber, David McCool, Michael Raworth, and Caitlin Kelly. All right. And so if your counsel would like to begin? And before you do, Steve Smith, let me just tell you something, is that we do have four matters on tonight. We know you're a great orator, we want to, we have all kind of reviewed things. We do want to kind of keep things as quick as we can, while you're still advocating for your plan, of course. But I have a question before you even start, and that is, you seem to be short of plan. Am I missing something here? Missing, we seem to be short of plan.
To the chair, I'm struggling to hear you. And I don't know if it's me, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you very well.
Okay, I'm not hearing everything you're saying, and so I look like I'm getting real close to the screens, because I'm trying to get close to the microphone, but I may not have heard everything you said.
Okay.
You're coming in a little bit distorted on my end, too, Jocelyn.
I am? All right, well, I may have to do the call in as well.
Have you got earphones?
I do, I've got everything here.
Earphones sometimes help with the microphone.
Yeah, I know, but I think it's, for me, it's much easier this way than dealing with the computer. So let's just call it in a second. Sorry, buddy.
I think the answer to your question is the documents that the board members and reviewing agencies should have received would have included the application, it would have included the denial letter and the worksheet from the building inspector. It would have included a plot plan, a 20-scale plot plan that was prepared by Charles Fayer, and it would have been eight and a half by 11 sheet showing elevations of the proposed structure.
Enter your participant ID, followed by pound. Please enter the meeting passcode, followed by pound. You entered 1-9-5-0-1-9. This meeting passcode is invalid. Please re-enter the meeting passcode, followed. You are in the meeting now. There are 13 participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Can everyone hear me okay now?
You're echoing. So you may, you may have, you may need to mute your mic on the Zoom side.
Am I still echoing?
No.
All right, so we're good. Are we ready to start now? Is everyone ready?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so I did receive the plan I was looking for, though, was a certified plot plan, the one we have as a proposed plot plan. But let's just proceed. Attorney Smith, want to get going and start your case?
Yes, thank you. Steven Smith representing Richard Miletis, who is a property owner at Four Copper Beach Lane. I believe he's been the owner of the property probably for the better part of 30 years. The home is located in R2 residential, single-family residential district. It was initially constructed in 1948, I believe, prior to some of the zoning dimensional requirements that are on the books today. More recently, in my recollection, it was 15, maybe, maybe 20 years ago, time flies, there was a second floor addition added onto the property. It's unique and it is located on a dead-end street, about 200 feet long, more or less. There's a 70-foot diameter radius at the end. If you look at that plot plan, if you have the Chuck Fayer plot plan, you're gonna see front yard setbacks of about 21 to 20 feet, depending on which corner you measure to. You're gonna see a right side setback, and it's angled, but it goes from 14 and widens out to 35 feet. The left side, measuring from the one-story addition on the left side of the property, has a setback of about 20 feet, more or less. There's also an existing shed on the property that has a setback about a foot or two at most. What's being proposed by Mr. Miletis is to, in the location with existing shed, is to construct a single-story garage with dimensions of 24 feet long, or I guess deep, 12 feet wide, and a pitched roof with a height of 12 feet. There were some building elevations, if you see them on the garage, the front elevation that you'd be seeing from Copper Beach Lane shows a garage door. The right side elevation, which is what you would see if you were on Mr. Miletis' property, looking to your left, shows an access doorway in windows and then small window dormitory for natural light. If you're on the neighbor's side to the left on Copper Beach Lane, you're gonna see a side with no windows and no openings. And to the rear of the property, which faces the rear of the homes at front on the hot road, again, other than for ventilation purposes, there are no openings or no windows.
The length on that is 28 feet, excuse me. Not, you said 24, it's 28.
I definitely said 24, and I stand corrected on that. That voice you just heard is Mr. Miletis, the property owner, and the applicant, who is available by telephone this evening. As I said earlier, the height of the structure is 12 feet, where actually 16 feet is allowable for a detached pitched roof garage. The front setback is significant, it's located in the rear yard, it's 50 feet plus from Copper Beach Lane. The right side, to the extent that is applicable, is about 70 feet between the right sideline and the new structure, proposed structure, is the existing dwelling. The left side and the rear are both three feet, which is what brings us before the zoning board appeals to tonight. Lot coverage with the new structure will increase from 17 to 22%, which is still below the threshold of 25% for the R2 district. Open space will decrease from 78% to 73%, which is well in excess of the minimum 40% that's required in that zoning district. And all those notations were calculated by the surveyor, and I believe are included on that plan that Mr. Fayer had prepared. So as a state, we're requesting a variance to allow the construction of a new garage with a three-foot left side setback with 10 feet is required, and a three-foot rear yard where 20 feet is required. Factors that we would hope that the board should consider in deliberations over this request is the low profile of the structure. It's kept as low as it could be and still be a functional garage. At 12 feet, well below the 16 feet, that might have been more of a visual issue for immediate butters. Strategically, not having any openings that are facing a budding properties to maintain the existing privacy that they're enjoying right now. If you're familiar with the property, it's surrounded by a stockade fence. And so, again, for privacy purposes, not only are there no openings, but there's a stockade fence separating the structure from surrounding properties. If you look at the proposed structure's location with respect to improvements on other properties beyond the fence line, there's also a significant separation between the structures, the existing homes at side yards equal to, or in rear yards, in excess of what's required by zoning. And so there's a good deal of space available for privacy and for air circulation and beyond. The proposed structure, as it stated earlier, was not going to result in overdevelopment of the property. We're still gonna be well above the requirements for open space, and we're gonna be below the threshold for building coverage. And it says, perhaps a more minor point, the existing structure is gonna be further from the surrounding properties than the existing shed. We're requesting a variance. The standard for variance is for the board to find that owing to circumstances related to the lot's soil condition, shape, or topography, that a literal enforcement will result in a hardship to the property owner, and relief can be granted without substantial detrimental, detriment to the public good, and without nullifying the intent of the zoning bylaw. In support of those findings, I would offer, and I, the initial filing was supplemented with three exhibits, was what happened when you crayons the lawyers, that were intended to illustrate what would happen if this lot were more regularly shaped. And so you should have plans, so Plan 1 of existing condition, Plan 2 with a different set of circumstances, Plan 3 with another set of circumstances. What I was attempting to illustrate is that the existing lot with the existing home is an odd-shaped lot. I don't think Mr. Casper is available right now, but he'd probably know better than the rest of us. I believe it's described as an irregular polygon or irregular quadrilateral, something to that effect. The lot is on a turnaround area. There's a significant bite out of the front yard from the radius of that 70-foot wide turnaround. The property with the zoning setbacks were in a place at that time, the existing dwelling, in order to meet those requirements, could essentially only be situated in that one location that you see it as right now, which is restricting the opportunity to do any other construction on the lot. To try to illustrate that, I took the radius portion out of the property and extended the angled right sideline to what would be an extension of Copper Beach Lane without the turnaround, and showed that if that were the case, the home of the same dimensions could have been located on the property differently, and the structure that's being proposed could be constructed without any zoning relief. And so that Exhibit 2 tries to show a building envelope that respects the 10-foot setbacks on the side and 20-foot in the rear, and shows where the house could have been located on a more regularly shaped lot and where the garage could be located and meet all the setback requirements. Plan number three shows the radius with a right sideline that is not angled, but square to a extension of Copper Beach Lane. It is, again, trying to show a much more opportunity for location of the primary structure on it, and all kinds of opportunity to locate a garage of the dimensions being proposed by Mr. Miletis that would not require any zoning relief. And so we think, our position is there is something unique about the lot's shape that required us to come to the zoning board of appeals to add any other structures, accessory structures on the lot. As to a literal enforcement resulting in a substantial hardship, without zoning relief, essentially no accessory structures can be added. And so it's pretty much all or nothing. We could not add the garage without any form of relief. And to the point of granting the variance without substantial detriment to the public good or minimizing the intent of the bylaw, I would get a point to that it's a low-profile structure. It respects neighbors' privacies by not having the openings on the sides that are facing the properties. It does not result in overdevelopment lot as measured by the dimensional requirements of an R2 district. And lastly, and I think these can be helpful in some instances, is what is the opinion of the neighbors? And they may or may not be present on tonight's Zoom here, and I hope that they are. But Mr. Miletis had gone and shared his plans with his neighbors on Copper Beach Lane and on Nahat Road, who back up to his property to get their opinion on him. And without exception, each of them had signed off in support of his petition. That is all I planned in terms of an initial presentation to the board. And certainly, Mr. Miletis and I are available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Smith. Okay, so now that we've heard from the applicant, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor tonight? The petition. Okay.
The applicant may want to speak in favor.
We received a list of persons, and you know, an actual map showing all the persons who, their addresses, where they would be located, who have signed. I can't read all the signatures right now. There are several, but I will show on my screen that is part of the record. I'll show you on my screen what that looks like. Okay. So first of all, this is a supplemental plan that we received, in case anyone didn't get a look at this. This is the existing conditions plan that Attorney Smith is referring to. And we have the Plan 2, no radius, existing angle, right sideline, is the title. Of course, that's in the middle, there's the one, the lot, there it is again. And here is a circle.
We're not seeing those, Jocelyn, if you're showing them.
You are not seeing them? I'm sorry.
We are not seeing them on the screen. I thought you indicated you were displaying them on the screen.
I apologize. Okay. Now you should be able to see it. So this is the butters, or I guess you'd call it the assessor's map, where he has circled all the people who have signed the following petition. Everybody should be able to see that, who doesn't have a copy. And then, if you go down to the next page, we have the list of persons who signed the petition and their addresses. I cannot read all of their names at the moment, but I do have the addresses. I'll figure out their names. Here's the assessor's map with their addresses circled. And then here's the actual map. Did everyone get a picture of this plan?
I don't think I saw these, I don't think I saw these, but you're displaying them now, so that's okay.
If we get to the beginning, then I'll go over it again with you. The other one has a chance to look at it properly. The first one is the existing conditions.
Yeah, this is what Attorney Smith was just showing us, as far as if the house was, if the, yeah, the house was situated better on the lot with respect to the, I'll call it cul-de-sac. It certainly could have lent itself to a better placement of a ancillary building.
Correct. And then we have the Plan 2, the no radius, existing angled right sideline that I mentioned.
Yeah, so what he did was he moved the house so that they could meet all the setbacks, showing that they would be able to basically put it there if it wasn't, if it wasn't such an odd-shaped lot and the house was not placed in the location it is.
And here's the Plan 3, no radius, perpendicular sideline, is the title of that plan. The hand-drawn, and just depicting these options, I'm sure to illustrate the point. But the point of my share was to show you the persons who spoke in favor, and I would take that to mean all of these parties who are circled, and that their addresses do seem to match up with all the names of the assigned petition that follows. Okay? So that's that. And now, so is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
Actually, we went over the drawings, you may want to go, are we going in favor first or in opposition first?
I would, I already asked in favor.
Oh, okay.
Favor, and no one responded, so that's why I showed the petition.
Okay, all right.
All the people in favor on record. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay. So at this point, once we get that, we get to ask some questions ourselves and do our, then we'll start our deliberations. So would anyone like to ask any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple. First of all, I guess I question why the garage needs to be so far back in the lot. It would seem to me to be easy to place it closer up the driveway. In other words, shorten the driveway and have the garage closer to Copper Beach Lane and thereby be able to achieve the rear setback. Is there some particular reason why that would not work?
Yeah, if I could try to answer that, this is a plot plan, it's not a topographical plan. If it was, you would see a slope up. Copper Beach Lane is significantly below Nahat Road. And the slope up to get to that grade begins on Copper Beach Lane and goes up the driveway of Four Copper Beach, and so there's a slope there. And then it plateaus off in a location where the proposed garage is located.
Okay, but how does that?
That's a flat portion of the lot.
Fair enough, but why does that make it impossible to place the garage closer to Copper Beach Lane?
You'd have a much more significant grade beyond the filling and the retention. You'd have a much more significant grade from Copper Beach to the garage for each incremental amount that you move it forward towards the street.
So I think, as I understand it, if you move it forward, then you're gonna have to dig a huge hole to put the back end of the garage in, so that the garage is built on a flat plane.
I suppose, yeah, there's one thing is to build it into the grade, the other is to build the grade up to meet the access, so I guess it's one or the other, a combination of the both. But the direct answer to that is because that's the existing flat portion of the topography of the lot, and it just lent itself to be located there.
Makes sense.
And then I also question why the garage could not be built in an orientation that more approximates the north-south axis, essentially to align with the front-back orientation of the main building, the primary structure. Maybe even bring it over adjacent to the addition, the little addition that's off to the left-hand side as you face it from the street. I mean, you could almost attach the garage to the main building. What's the downside of that?
Again, you'd be pulling the whole structure forward to get in that alignment, then to get, I don't have those cut-out pieces anymore. But as you pull it forward and swing it on an axis to its right, you have to pull it forward even more to get a sideline, and you're gonna be in that sloped area that goes down to Copper Beach Lane. And so I guess, whether it's a good or a bad answer, the reason is, the shed is where it is, because that's a flat portion of the lot, and the idea was to keep it consistent with that and minimize any other disruption onto the property by leaving it on the flat portion.
And I gather we don't have an estimate of comparative cost to do it the way that it's proposed versus the way that I've inquired about.
No, we never looked at that alternative.
Okay.
Any more questions for the applicant?
I just have one. I was looking at the dimensional requirements that you, it looks like were filled out for the existing and then proposed, and where that you'll be seeking a variance. And I know you applied for both the variance and the special permit, but underneath the rear, or under rear setback and left setback, it says under existing, non-applicable, but there is an existing structure, right? There's the shed there. So do you know what the setbacks are currently?
The shed, I believe it's between one and two feet, and I, and again, we don't fill that dimensional table out that the building inspector does. My personal professional experience is when you have a shed, they don't really look at, you know, a freestanding shed, look at. You know, a freestanding shed, uh look at it's it's setback issues.
Yeah, so a shed, I believe. If I remember correctly, a certain size shed, I want to say eight by, yeah, eight by ten is considered a movable shed. So it's not a permanent structure, so it doesn't have to meet the setbacks.
Got it. Does, and maybe this is a question for like us to argue about. Question, but basically I was gonna say that is it harder to do the special permit route? Because there's technically a movable there and not a permanent.
Uh yeah, I I tried to work within the special permit process whenever I can because I I think it gives everybody. Particularly an applicant, a little more latitude in terms of what the standards are for for consideration. Um but this just doesn't fit into that box, uh in my opinion. Um it it could only be approved by way of a variance. And and so we had requested a a variance. For this specific petition.
That answers my question.
Okay. Alright, so would we like, everybody's going to deliberation? So we're gonna talk amongst ourselves right now. And um if we want, you guys, please don't interrupt us, we'll talk for a few minutes and then kind of come to a decision hopefully. If anyone um if we have any questions, we'll we'll reach out. Okay, so what does everybody think about this?
Um I actually, you know, it's funny, we've we've often talked about how difficult it is to apply for a variance and and prove kind of the. Um you know, the requirements for a variance and and I I have to say, this is one of those times with the house being. Situated where it is, this absolutely meets that topographical. Um obstruction, I guess, is maybe the the best way to say it or the, you know, the 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 fact that the house is. Is askew and it's on a cul-de-sac. Um you know, they didn't make the best use of of the property and therefore. Um you know, again, with the hill on the front of the uh the front of the property, uh makes it uh much more costly to. Um you know, to to move that garage and put it on a a hill. Um so, uh you know, I I I think this is one of those times where. Um I though is though difficult to to prove, this is one of those that I I think we've we're seeing that. You know, topography definitely plays a part.
Guess I would just suggest that that the uh the decision is gonna be based, obviously, we're talking about topography. Uh the the rise that the that uh Mr. Attorney Smith just described. And that actually presumably translates into a cost to excavate or otherwise modify the. The ground conditions to be able to uh to relocate the position of the proposed garage. So that's a question of whether it involves substantial hardship. And where desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I want to give my two cents there. Now is that, if anything's gonna happen, if anything should happen, it would be as a a variance, I would agree with everyone on that. Um because I did go over there, spent some time looking at the site, actually went there twice. Um I noticed the elevation um towards the back. But then I asked myself, is a garage really necessary? Do we really need to add a twenty-eight foot long garage in that neighborhood? Um it takes away from our light and air. I know I I oppose a lot of things, but just my, I my my, I don't know, my 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 own feeling, after I'm entitled to, is that. It's gonna add a lot of mass to the neighborhood and a lot of. Less air, less room. Not everybody has to have a garage. Um I think it's gonna be too close to the lot line. I don't like it. That being said. What is there was everybody else's opinion?
I I walked by today as well, and I think if you are gonna put it on the site, I agree, that's the only place you can put it. Um so, you know, I think there's a shed there now and you can see that as you walk by. So to the extent that he's not adding something new, um you know, I feel like it it's it's warranted. That's the only place you can put it and um there's already something there, so.
So if we were going to do it, right, then what what about, we would maybe should talk about what kind of conditions there would be? You know, like it can never be occupied, is is um things like that.
Oh yeah, definitely, yeah. I mean.
Which way from you's not gonna fall, it's impossible. Go ahead.
I agree with Caitlin. Um you know, I I mean, ours is not to question why he wants a garage, but. Um you know, there there is a structure there. Um you know, we have um all of the neighbors uh both behind him as well as to either side across the street, even at the end of the street. Um have all um you know, expressed that they don't have a problem with this. Um I mean, you know, we need, I know we need to make findings, but uh you know, I I think. Regardless to the, if, even if the garage was twenty-four feet or, you know, I mean. Uh I I don't think. I I don't think it's problematic. That's my feeling on it.
Obviously, the the support of the neighbors is a significant deal, that that makes a lot of difference. I guess the real, the only, the only, if you will, asterisk to that. Is these neighbors are not always going to be the same neighbors and this does increase the density. Generally of the of the property and that lasts long after people transact and sell their sell their property and so forth.
Right. I mean, but by definition, it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. My feeling is if all your neighbors say, hey, this is a a good ad or whatever, then it's not substantially detrimental. To the neighborhood. I I think it's one of the problems that we have in our zoning bylaw is that. There is no pure definition of substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh everybody kind of has their, uh I think their own opinion.
That would be a difficult definition to come up with.
Exactly, exactly.
But I disagree, I think we do have our definition in a way. I mean, if you take a look at the purpose for the zoning bylaws, it says that we're, our job is to make sure that we preserve light and air. And and serve the heart for people. Um that's at the very beginning of the bylaws. So what is to say, just because people agree to it, doesn't mean it's not substantially detrimental, in my opinion.
Well, yeah, but if you, if you think about the building that's currently there and the stockade fence, how much light in the air is being changed by adding?
That's bad, that movable shed is why it's in that setback is because it's a movable shed. We can get rid of it if we want to, you know, and this is a permanent structure, it's gonna be twenty-eight feet long. I once hit a pool thirty feet long, that is a long distance.
Yep.
Alright, so anyway, what does everybody else think? Dave McCool, does anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'm I'm sort of in line with Peter. Um you know, all the neighbors, they know the area better than all of us. And they're all, they have no problem with it, obviously, if it doesn't. You know, doesn't annoy or impede with their enjoyment of life and the air and things like that, minds of sight. And I don't know, I'm I'm of the mindset that it's not a problem, I mean.
Yeah, and and again, the fence is there, you know, it's, there's a stockade fence that's six feet high. So there's some of your light and, you know, I mean.
Yeah, the opinion of the neighbors doesn't doesn't definitely determine that there's no detrimental effect. However, it's a pretty significant indicator and I think we ought to give that substantial weight.
So I'd like to make a motion that we fi- have a a finding that uh this this project would not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Uh would you take a friendly amendment to to uh use the the text of the bylaw that uh. amend the motion to say to be that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land. Or structures and if especially affecting such parcel or such building, but not affecting generally the district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the applicant. And desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially. Derogating from the intent or purposes of this bylaw. Would you accept that as a friendly amendment, Peter?
I I will accept, I will accept it as a friendly, yeah.
Wait, in terms of just a order, just Peter and Michael, I want you to know, what we usually do with variances is we make Peter's this finding that Peter said first. And then we do, then we do that one.
I apologize, well, no, no, I'm sorry, we can do them in two, there's no question, no problem about that.
Yeah, we've always, we've always separated them, I don't know why, I was gonna, I I I was gonna second, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry to be a bull in the china shop, let's, let's, your your motion stand as it was.
Okay, so yeah, we would do the finding on substantially detrimental and then the other one would be the. The long drawn-out version, you're, yes.
Do we, we keeping the amendment or not, Peter?
Well.
I withdraw the amendment, I withdraw the amendment, so Peter's motion stands as 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 made.
Alright, so that's the finding and yeah, we'll need a second on that.
Who's second in the motion?
I'll second the motion, David McCool.
Okay, great. A discussion on the motion? Nope, okay, no, having no discussion, uh all in favor?
Uh Peter Barber says aye.
David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Jonathan Campbell, no. Okay, do we have a motion for anything else?
Alright, so now, Mike, if you want to read that um long-winded um motion, then we would, that would be the second part of it.
So I move that the board specifically find that. Owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or structures. And especially affecting such parcel or such building, but not affecting generally the district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the Nahat zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship. Financial or otherwise to the applicant. And where desirable and and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying. Nor substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw.
I'll second that.
A discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Peter Barber says aye.
David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Jonathan Campbell, no. Okay, so we have just um made a finding relative to um the variance, the what we need to do in order to find a variance. And do we have a motion to actually grant the variance?
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna make a motion that uh we we grant the variance. Um with the stipulations that um the garage could never be um. Used as a residence, uh I don't know if that's the proper term.
Okay, how it may not be occupied?
May not be occupied. Thank you. As a dwelling unit.
It may not be taller than it, it must be built as presented.
And yeah, I was, I was gonna get to that and um built uh as the plans presented.
And is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Mike Raworth? And uh any discussion on the motion? Uh all in favor?
Uh Peter Barber says aye.
Uh David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Jonathan Campbell, no. Okay, we granted a variance for the property at four Copper Beach. Lane. And um we'll get decisions and everything filed in the next two weeks. And then there's a twenty-day appeal period and then you'll be good to go. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, so fifteen minutes past the time for our next hearing. So let's get started on that. Okay, the next matter before us. Tonight. Two thirty-eight Wilson Road.
Excuse me, Jocelyn, just to, let's just confirm who it is that's sitting on this matter.
Okay, I'll do that right now. On two thirty-eight Wilson Road, we have um myself, Jonathan Campbell, David Walsh. Peter Barber, Max Casper and David McCool. So Michael, you've got a little break until one sixteen will open, if that's okay? And Caitlin, you have a break until one sixteen will also. So. I will um get the getting started, is the applicant present?
Yes, uh ma'am, chairperson, I'm attorney Sam Vitali. With me is the applicant, uh Mr. De Jong. Um what you have before you is his request to build a home at two thirty-eight Wilson Road. I'm certain that the members of the board and many people in uh Nahat are more familiar than I with the history of the lot, but briefly.
Sorry, Vitali, hold on, can you hold on for just a minute? We have some preliminary matters we have to take care of first, let's take a minute, a minute or two. Okay, so it is now about five forty-six P M and we're going to get started on the petition for two thirty-eight Wilson Road. And I'm going to read into the record on the governor's order and then uh the advertisement that was placed in the line item. So the governor's order, which I read earlier and I will repeat because I'm not sure who was here and who was was not, is that. A public hearing will be held on the zoning board of appeals on Monday, May seventeenth. Via remote technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order, defending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the hearing that we have right now, it was originally scheduled for five thirty, we're running a little late. It's a public hearing on the petition filed by. Looks like uh Thomas Otseanis, Arien, De Jong. Um and Habitat for Humanity at all for the property located at two thirty-eight Wilson Road, Nahat Math. Seeking dimensional variances or special permit to build a new residence in place of a demolished, fire-damaged original dwelling. The inspector of buildings has denied a building permit because the proposed building is in violation of section five point zero three. Of the zoning bylaws of the town of Nahat. Where the existing area of the lot is two thousand seven hundred and eight square feet. And the minimum allowed is ten thousand square feet. The proposed lot coverage is forty percent, where the maximum allowed is twenty-five percent. The proposed floor area ratio is ninety percent, where the maximum allowed is forty-five percent. The proposed number of stories is three, where the maximum allowed is two point five. The left side setback is four point three, oh no, the proposed front setback is nineteen point five. I missed that, where the minimum allowed is twenty-five. The proposed left side setback is four point three, where the minimum allowed is ten feet. And the proposed right side setback is four point three, where the minimum allowed is ten feet. So after reading the advertisement, now um the next thing I have to do is to explain that we received a letter from the planning board in regard to this matter. I will need to read that to you. Give me a moment. Because what happens, Mr. De Jong, is that we um receive an application. It goes through the building department and then they're required by our bylaws. Um to give it to the other town boards to review. We have to give them thirty-five days when that happens. And so that we have, in that time period, the planning board did send us a letter dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. And um here are, here are their comments. Um and Steve Jocelyn, that's to me, this letter shares the planning board's comments on the above captioned. Appeal to the Z B A, the denial of the building permit of by the building inspector. We understand the previous house was destroyed by fire January first, two thousand eighteen. So this application does not meet the requirement, um the time requirement of section seven oh three D. Therefore cannot be rebuilt as a matter of right. The planning board believes the intent of seven oh three D is to bring lots and structures into conformance with the bylaws over time. Also, the application does not complete, contain a complete description of the prior structure. The planning board has concerns over the number of variances being requested that result in a house that is overall very large relative to the lot size. Respectfully submitted to town planning board. Okay, so the next thing is that we, after we read the ad in the in the newspaper, is that um you have an opportunity now to present your case. I think I mentioned earlier who was going to be hearing the case today, um so you can get started.
Thank you. Um as I was saying earlier, you may all be more familiar than I with this history of this lot. I would suggest to you that uh. There's nothing that can be built of a residential purpose on this lot, given its irregular shape, its. Steep topography, its prior history and the character of the area. We can't make the lot any bigger, we can't change its shape and we can't change its slope. But a home was on there since nineteen twenty. Uh that home would not meet today's zoning bylaw standards. Uh with respect to the current dimensional requirements in the town of Nahat. Uh because it preceded uh the adoption of those. And uh as you indicated in reading the letter from the planning board and as the applicant understands. When a conflagration, a fire destroys something, people have an opportunity um in most cities and towns to rebuild what was there. And the prior owner uh. And the prior owner did avail themselves of that opportunity. And as I understand it, the fire was about four years ago. The prior owner did obtain a building permit, did obtain conservation commission approval to rebuild the home, but for whatever reason, did not timely exercise that permission. And that permit either expired or was revoked. The homeowner then chose to donate the property to two charitable institutions, one Gordon College and the other the Habitat for Humanity. And it's those folks who stand to benefit financially if, in fact, a home were to be built with the approval of the board. Let me just point out, I have represented Habitat for Humanity in other cities and towns, and unlike their efforts in those towns where they rely upon the contributions by contractors and suppliers and the volunteer labor of people to build the home, this is not one of those. This home will be built by a licensed contractor. It will be built in accordance to the architectural plans that were submitted. And I saw earlier on my screen that the architect was online, would be available to answer questions. With respect to the relief that sought, I think anybody that would seek to build a home on this irregular-shaped lot with its topography would have the same difficulties in satisfying the current zone ordinance dimensional regulations. I would note that in some ways, this planned home is preferable to the home that had been on the site since 1920 and was destroyed in the fire. One is the elevation is less than the prior home, while not in accordance with the current zone ordinance. It is a lower building than what was there previously. And obviously, this home being built now would be, in many ways, satisfying the current building code, energy codes, and would be more in keeping with what is required in 2021, that when, what was required in 1920. As to the use, it's a single-family district, and what's proposed is a single-family home. The single-family home is slightly larger, I believe, for lot coverage for one essential reason. The old home had two exterior parking spaces very close to the roadway. What this proposal has is one interior space, which makes it somewhat safer from the line of sight in terms of in and out of the locus, because one space is within a garage, which is proposed at the dwelling, and also facilitates maneuverability of parked vehicles. So I think in terms of the parking plan and the safety of egress and access, the proposed dwelling is superior to what had previously been there. As I say, I don't really know, and I don't know how much it's relevant, why the prior owner failed or chose not to proceed, even though they did get a building permit. And so they made a decision, for whatever reason, and donated the land to these charitable groups. And the charitable groups have put the lot up for sale, and Mr. De Jong rides his bicycle and said that's how he first came across the site. Had his long-term interest in the development of the site, and he made an offer that was accepted. And if the board were to approve the development of the home as proposed, ultimately, I believe it would be a benefit, first, obviously, to Mr. De Jong, who wants to be a resident and live in this new home. Secondly, to the neighborhood that for the past three or four years has had to look at what essentially is a vacant lot. I believe there's a portion of the foundation that might have been retained, and I'm only surmising whether it was the intention of the prior owner to keep a small portion of the foundation to preserve their right to rebuild. But virtually, the lot is vacant. And so in terms of hardship, land has its value in its utility and its use. This is a lot in a residential district. There's no residence that can be put on the lot that I'm aware of that could satisfy the various dimensional criteria that are cited with respect to the need for a variance. In terms of what is proposed, we hope to have the house, once approval was received, have construction begin right away. The neighbors have had to look at an empty lot or a lot that had a demolished building for some period of time. And what is proposed is to build a new residence, as I indicated, one that needs the variance approvals, as the building inspector outlined in his analysis. I think that Mr. Faya, who was the surveyor, who did the plot plan, showed on his plot plan the original dwelling, enlisted that as the existing, and then showed the proposed dwelling, enlisted that as proposed, so that one could compare what was there, what's proposed to be there. And I would suggest that there is not a great deal of difference in terms of the prior dwelling and the proposed dwelling. But we believe that the proposed dwelling is, in fact, a less intensive use and a better use of the land, given the constraints of the shape of the lot and the topography. And so with respect to the public good, I think the public good would be satisfied by putting a residential dwelling in a residential neighborhood and having it generate taxes for the town, and having it fit in with the character of that neighborhood, which is one of a single-family homes on a similar-shaped lot. And overall, I think it's in keeping with the intention and the purposes of the zone ordinance, which is to beautify and to have the town in Nahat have housing that's affordable for people and have the impact be such that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. And I would suggest to you that a, an empty lot or a burned-out lot is more detrimental in its impact on the neighborhood than is returning and restoring a home to this lot that, as I say, is from 1920s on, up until the fire was used and had a single-family dwelling. So the use is consistent with what was there. The proposal that you have before you, we believe, is, in fact, an improvement on what was there. And I think that the petition, or I, and hopefully I can find the architect back up on the screen, and we'd be glad to answer questions that any member may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so at this point in the hearing, after you've made your presentation, what we like to do here is we ask if there is anyone who would like to speak in favor of the petition.
You can speak. The petition. My, my goal with the plan here was to come up with a house that is modern, but it fits within the, the shape of the original house. It's less intrusive. The idea and design is that both neighbors, both the butting neighbors, are able to take more advantage of light in morning and evening by taking the top floor half back and reducing the total floor plan of the house. And so I think we've done our best to try and fit something in what is, you know, a square peg into a round hole, and try and fit something in that makes it workable both as a residence and as something that, for the neighbors, is an improvement on where they are now, rather than a detriment. I think that's where I am with it.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone who would like, is there anyone else who would like to speak in, and who wants to speak in opposition of this petition?
I don't know. Did you say in opposition?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Does that speak in opposition?
Okay, I'm in opposition because of the sides of four, four feet on each side does not allow enough because there was a fire.
Excuse me, can you state your name and your address, please?
Yeah. Speak up, did you say?
No, state your name and address.
Oh, Charles Butera, 98 Little Nahat Road, Nahat, yeah. And my lane goes all the way to Wilson.
What, what number, Little Nahat?
98.
98, okay. Okay, go ahead, sir. Tell us what you were going to say.
Okay, I'm opposed to the side, you on the sides of both sides of four feet, three inches, I think they want to have. And that does not allow, if anybody was there when the fire started. I, I saw it on a video because I'm a snowbird, let me put it that way. And there's no way that any fireman could get up and down those, that four foot, two or three firemen trying to run up and down, trying to save people's lives from either, either side. And I'm opposed on both sides of that being four feet, four feet, three inches.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay. All right, so at this point in the hearing, what happened?
Sorry, sorry, excuse me. Matt Ackerman here. We're, we're, we're the butters. We're 240 Wilson Road. And my wife is on as well. Um, I don't know that I'm in opposition per se, but I did have some questions. When would I be able to ask some clarifying questions? Or how does that? I don't want to.
Typically, you, you don't get to ask too many questions at this. You get to tell us if you're in favor or not. But if you have any questions now might be a good time. So why don't you tell us what they are?
So then, I guess this is borderline opposition. My only question is, when we went through this before with the previous owners to get permitting, my understanding was that they were to mirror the footprint from before. And obviously, I see a couple decks added and, you know, additional story and things of that nature. So I just was curious, you know, what the intent there was, and/or if that's even able to, to go outside of what was there before, because that was our understanding.
Okay, so we don't know that yet. We're still in the process of determining that. And that's what we are right now. We, we haven't even talked about that yet.
Cart before the horse. No worries. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, so at this point, Mr. De Jong, what we do is we talk amongst ourselves. It's called deliberation, and no one should interrupt us. And then once we, we have any questions, we'll certainly reach out to you or to your attorney, Mr. Vitale. Okay? All right, so everybody, what do you think here?
So I guess my question would be, what was the, if we had the score, if we had the existing information, where would this new structure be in relation to the, the one that burned?
Well, Peter, I think if you look at the, the plot plan that he gave us, it shows a proposed and an existing, supposedly. I did see that. But I want to raise a different issue. First of all, I'm not sure that we even legally can grant this. Certainly, with all of these variances and setbacks, I don't know that that's even a possibility. It's kind of excessive. The other thing is, is the, even if we were to grant something that was within the footprint, I'm not even sure we can, because the two-year period was, and according to our bylaws, has expired. The one thing that caught my attention is that, you know, council said that there had been a previous application. So I think what we really should do is take a look at that, see if something has been filed, and see what the effect, you may have to consult with town council, is on any, on that two-year period.
So the, just from what I know, the fire was four years ago. And you, there's a two-year grace period, even if the existing homeowner who was burned out got a building permit, that would, building permit would have expired, because it's been four years.
I think it, I think it's three years. It's, it's January 1st, 2018. So three years and four months.
Okay.
If that makes a difference.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it certainly does. I, I think, well, I don't know. I always thought that a building permit, and Max, help us out here. A building permit is good for one year. You need to begin construction from the date you have the permit to, to when, you know, like, you can wait till the 364th day to start construction, but if you wait till 366, then the building permit is no longer valid. Is that correct?
Well, maybe we could ask the applicant to clarify what the previous history of permits or relief was, because I'm not, I'm not clear on that at this point.
Okay, so.
So, Mr. Vitale, do you know?
I'm looking at the permit, and it says the date it issued was December the 26, 2019.
That's a building permit?
Yes. The application.
Was there zoning relief associated with that?
I believe it's permit number I-1900229. But my understanding was, I believe that it got revoked. And that may be, as someone alluded to, if you're not making progress. But again, I, I'm only doing this on hearsay. But my understanding is that I think, for whatever reason, the prior owner gave up the ghost and just did not proceed.
Yeah, I mean, that, that permit from 19 is not still an active permit. There's no question about that. But what I'm trying to understand is, was there zoning relief that allowed that building permit to be issued? I don't recall that history.
I don't, my, again, my understanding is no, that the.
That they permitted it under.
Approval, but not, I don't believe they required to, if they built in the same footprint, they weren't required to satisfy the current dimensional regulations.
That's that chapter.
And I think I alluded to in the beginning, that's why I had some suspicion about the portion that may be still left on the lot and was not totally removed. Whether that, again, I don't know that as a fact, but I'm just surmising that someone may have left that there to support their argument that they wanted to rebuild what was there. But unfortunately, they didn't do that.
So the problem we have here is that the, they've lost their protected status. And so we need to figure out whether or not there's anything remaining of that protected status. And if the pulling of that building permit would have, I don't think it would have told anything myself. I don't believe, I don't know if it's happened.
Jocelyn. I, I don't think that the, the building permit being issued is that relevant. I, I think it's more of a question of, if you don't utilize that destruction by fire clause, where does that leave you? And I don't, I don't know that that's crystal clear. I, I don't think that I'm of the opinion that it, once you, once you don't act on that reconstruction, the, the lot becomes useless. I, I've seen situations like this before, and, and I think it's more akin to like a Section 6 situation where it's not a non-buildable lot at that point, but anything that gets built at that point needs to have a Section 6 finding in order for it to proceed. I'm not, I'm not rock solid on that, but I have seen a similar circumstance before. But, you know, one of my curiosities is the, is the relief requested, because I guess I'm not convinced that if it is a situation like I'm described, that it's, that it requires variance after variance after variance. But it's, it's tricky. So maybe Mr. Vitale can, can speak to that a little bit.
I, I, I hear you, and I, I hope I can support what you said, because obviously, the standard in 486, that what is proposed is not substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood than the existing use, is a lot easier standard to reach and find than it is to support and find the variance standard requirements. But the problem I think we have is that the use may have been pre-existing, non-conforming. And, but the structure, if it's gone, is no longer a non-conforming structure, because it's not there. But in fact, that is the issue, that, that you can't build. There's no way that the use that's allowed in the district for a single-family could be constructed on this lot and satisfy the current dimensional regulations because of the lot's shape and the lot's topography. And also because the town, over the years, has adopted certain dimensional regulations, which this dwelling that was there in the 1920s probably didn't satisfy then or now. And any new proposed dwelling would have the same difficulty, because you can't make the lot any bigger, you can't change its unique shape. And I think that in terms of a variance, one of the things that this is a unique situation in that not only was there a fire, but that the owner did, in fact, get a, a building permit. But it's my understanding that I think it was revoked, and I think it was revoked because of inactivity. But I can't tell you, explain why.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go back to our deliberations now, okay? So the, the thing is, I just want to raise this to the, to the board, that we do have it in our bylaws, that this, that two. we do have it in our bylaws, that this, that two years is the period of abandonment. And after two years, it's considered abandoned. And I'm not sure that we legally can allow any of this, even if the property were to be built, or being proposed within the old footprint. I'm not sure we could allow it. Somebody tell me why we could, and then, if we have to continue this matter, like I said, and consult, I can show you the bylaws, um, take a quick look at them right now, see.
Jocelyn, what's?
I agree.
Jocelyn, I'm trying to, try to get something in my head. Earlier, you said the term "they." Does they refer to the original owner of the property? Or?
I don't know.
The person who bought the property after that?
Do you, will you mean that the, what do you say? I don't know what conversation you're talking about, because.
So you said, or you had mentioned something about, uh, the, the term, the two-year term running out, because they had not applied for the building permit. Now, if the property gets sold during that, after that period, does that reapply?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so the reason being, the reason I ask is, so suppose somebody, suppose somebody bought a piece of property for, you know, four hundred thousand dollars. And then, are we saying then that well, you should never have bought it, because you never could have built on it anyway?
Correct. We are saying that. They'd, they'd be, they're pretty foolish to buy it. Um, take a look at this section, D. It says here, right, plain English, that no structure or land abandoned for more than two years shall be permitted to continue or revert to a non-conforming use destruction.
So wait a minute, wait a minute. No, no structure or land. Or a non-conforming use.
It has not been abandoned. The use, someone's still paying the taxes on the real estate. The use is.
We're, we're in deliberations right now, so hang on a second, okay?
So.
No, I do, I do think that abandoned is a, is a pretty sticky word. And sometimes you have to look to the, like, the intent. And if there was a prior building permit applied for, granted, you know, it's, it's not, even though there's been inactivity on the lot, it's my understanding that that doesn't always equate to abandonment. So, and I, it, it's certainly worth kind of exploring, but I'm, I'm not convinced that, that this is truly abandoned after just a few years, um, simply because there hasn't been construction there.
Right, obviously, I don't think the land is abandoned, meaning the owner has disappeared and hasn't, you know, there clearly is somebody that owns the property, and I, I'm, I'm wondering if that term abandonment is abandonment of moving forward with replacing it due to fire. You know, like, if this was a ten thousand square foot lot, and, or, yeah, if this was a ten thousand square foot lot, and let's say the house sat two feet off the, the, uh, you know, the left setback. And the new owners wanted to build in the exact same space, the problem is, they let that two years expire. There, there's a non-conformity. And they've abandoned their ability to rebuild in the same spot because they let that two-year time period lapse. That's what I, I don't think the abandonment means they've abandoned the property and, you know, it's, nobody owns it. It's, I think it's, they've abandoned their, their right to build a structure in the same spot.
They've lost their protection.
They've lost their protection, right. And I think that's, the abandonment is the sec, is, is what they're talking about. I think it's abandonment of their protection. It, it is, I think it's how I read it, more than, um, you know, the abandonment of the, the actual property.
Right, I agree with you, Peter. David McCool here. And, and Jocelyn, I, I agree with Peter, what he said. I think they, they're losing their uh, protection because of the non-conformities. But what I think, uh, Jocelyn, I agree with you. I don't think we're gonna have this done and figured out tonight. I think we better get a quick opinion of town council and continue this matter, so we, we get it right, in fairness to the, uh, the proposal and, and everything else.
Yeah, I mean. I agree with, uh, Mr. McCool. Uh, if he put that in a motion, I would second it for the purposes of discussion.
So, so I would, uh, if you just, uh, give me, you know, allow me, uh, a, a minute, um, you know, if we had gotten proposals, I would feel more comfortable if the proposals were a little bit more closer to the original structure, even though they've lost that right. This is a, this is a little bit larger structure. It's actually, it looks like it's an additional floor. Um, you know, I, I, and I understand, let's face it, you're not gonna make the property any wider, you're not gonna make it any deeper. You know, there are, there certainly were ways to reduce the, um, you know, like, the lot coverage being at ninety percent. Um, I mean, the floor area ratio at ninety percent. Um, so I, I, I think there's, I think I'd be a little bit more amendable to the fact that, of the situation, if it was a little closer to the original house. It still could be, you know, a beautiful house, but not as, you know. So that's my, uh, kind of my take on it.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is maybe have a motion to, um, to continue the matter. Is there anyone who would like to bring a motion to that effect?
I think, David McCool, you gonna?
Yes, I'm sorry, um, I was muted. Jocelyn, I'll make a motion to continue the matter, just to get a quick opinion of town council on what abandonment means and under the circumstances here.
And I'll second that, listen.
Based on that permit. And see if that has any effect, as I said, you know, at the get-go.
Yep.
I think it's important for that, before we make a decision. And, and if we find out that it, that it's the case, that, let's say, they could build as a right, then it would be their choice if they wanted to reduce that property to what it was. I don't see them getting, just, just for the record, we typically only allow one or two pieces. We don't usually allow all of these types of things for any property.
It's seven variances?
Correct. It's a lot.
Yeah.
So, second on that motion to continue?
Yes, I second it.
David Walsh.
Turn on the motion. All in favor?
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay, but remember now, we, when we continue a matter on our own accord, we have to have an estate certain. So we can do a couple of things. We can put it on, um, for next Monday, if you want, or go to June seventh, which is our next date. But not everybody's gonna be here on that date.
June seventh would be preferable, so everybody has enough time to examine the question completely, which I also think, in terms of statement, is, one of the members alluded to, is, is it possibly have any use at all for this land?
That's the, that's the kind of thing that we, we're trying to look at for you. Um, so how do the members feel? Uh, we need to get, the members who have heard it tonight would need to be able to hear it that night.
I would say. I would say June seventh, because I don't think one week is enough time for our attorneys to properly look at this.
Max will be away. Max, when is the next date that you're available?
Let me pull up my calendar.
Max is not gonna be on June seventh, everybody. That's why I'm asking. He told me he was away that night, and Caitlin and, um, Michael are covering for him.
And I have, uh, before anybody proposes, like, the eighth, ninth, or tenth, I will be out of state, and while I have been able to call in in the past, I actually have both, uh, morning events and business, um, and evening business events. So I would not be able to do eighth, ninth, or tenth of June.
Does June first work?
Does it have to be Max? Because I've been listening, and I've been on here, and I could step in, but it might have to be him for, like, continuity or, or by rules, but if not, I'd be happy to.
But I believe, when we continue a matter, it's supposed to be the same members?
Makes sense.
So what about either June first or June fourteenth, which is the following Monday?
The fourteenth is fine.
Might defeat the purpose, because it's too soon?
Yeah, fourteenth is good.
Yeah, fourteenth is good for me.
Fourteenth is fine with me, other than, is Flag Day considered a holiday?
No.
Okay.
It's not a national, uh, it's not a listed national holiday, I don't believe.
Okay, Peter and Max, okay with you, and Dave McCool with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay with me. You have June fourteenth.
Mr. Vitale, is it okay with you, June fourteenth?
What, what time would it be? Would it be for the similar time, five thirty or five, or?
Five o'clock typically. Five o'clock. Okay?
So here, just, I don't, I don't wanna throw.
Because otherwise, you're gonna have to deny the matter. So we're gonna continue it, and figure it out. Peter, do I say something?
Yeah, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but, um, according to the, uh, Baker administration, um, as of May twenty-ninth, uh, all restrictions will be lifted, lifted due to COVID. And I don't know if that means we will then be required to do face-to-face meetings. Just putting it out there.
If that happens, we'll have to get together.
Okay, but, which is fine. I just, I, you know.
Might make the five o'clock time hard for us, because all of us are at work, so we just, it's great to be able to get on and.
Jocelyn, I know I won't, wouldn't be available in person. I know that.
Well, we, and we can do, we can continue with having a person call in. I've done it a couple of times on business trips. So you, you, we wouldn't have, yeah, we wouldn't have a Zoom call. The, the town hall now does have phones down in the meeting rooms that we would, you would be able to call in and, and listen. And, and, and it worked out fine. Um, again, if there are anything shown on a screen or something, um, you wouldn't have that.
Yeah, we typically have all that stuff in advance anyway.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's great. So we continue the matter, so that we can get an opinion from council, and we're going to, um, think about it, and in the meantime, you should probably think about what kind of house you can build as a right as well. It's just because of the subject thing coming up. Think about it. All right, thank you very much, sir. We'll be back in touch. We'll see you on the fourteenth. Yep. Okay, so our next matter tonight is fifteen Simmons Road. And that should be the Brooks family. And they're present. Hi, Brooks family, hi.
Hi.
Okay, so today, May seventeenth, it is about six twenty-four PM. And my name is Jocelyn Campbell. I'm the chair of the zoning board for Nahat, and we, this matter is being recorded right now. And so what we're going to do is, we're going to first read a little bit about the governor's order. We're gonna read the advertisement that was placed for your home, and then we'll get started with the hearing. And then, um, but after that, I'll announce who is present. So on, um, in the newspaper, the Lynn Ida, we placed, placed an advertisement. And in that advertisement, it said that a public, public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals on Monday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, via remote technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the portion of it that applied to your application was, um, a public hearing on the petition filed by Benjamin Brooks and Angela Monroe for the property located at fifteen Simmons Road in the hot map, seeking a special permit and ovarian. The inspector of buildings has denied the building permit, because the proposed addition is in violation of six and five point oh-three of the zoning bylaws of the town of Nahat, where the proposed lot coverage is thirty-nine percent and where the maximum allowed is twenty-five percent. The proposed burpee road setback is an extension of the same, where the minimum allowed is twenty-five feet. And the proposed side setback is an extension of the, where the minimum allowed is ten feet. Okay, so at this point in the hearing, I want to introduce, who's gonna be speaking to you tonight, or speaking with you. And we have myself, Jocelyn Campbell, we have David Walsh, Peter Barber, Max Casper, and David McCool. So if you could please, um, present your case, if we're listening.
Yes, hi, thank you. So we've been living here at, uh, fifteen Simmons Road now since two thousand and thirteen, for about eight years. And, uh, I mean, I would say that we love this house, and, uh, and we love living here. Uh, it's, it's about twelve hundred square feet of living space. Uh, we have two kids. And I think it may be about thirteen hundred square feet, if you count the, uh, the closed-in porch. So this we see as, um, a very modest, uh, extension, or, uh, addition, that would be add about a hundred and eighty-nine square feet to the, to the total living space. Uh, and it would be just a bump out on one floor of the, uh, kitchen and the, uh, dining room area. And our view on this is that this just gives us just enough extra space to make the house really, uh, work, uh, work for us, um, because as it is now, it's great, but it is just a little bit, uh, small and a little bit cramped. Um, so really, I, I think it's, you know, when we got the house, there, there's a garage in the backyard. And I think one thing to take into consideration, although I don't think it has any legal significance, is that, uh, we actually cut off about a hundred square feet off the back of the garage, um, so that we could park behind there, uh, and use that area as a parking space, instead of the area between the house garage as a parking space, which is how it had been used before. Um, and, and that is the plan. So what we lose in, uh, the, the yard area, um, that the addition takes up, which is only a, really a seven-foot swath along the length of the building, I think we kind of made up for by cutting off, uh, that portion of the garage. Um, but like I said, I don't think that has any significance, because that was, you know, four years ago when we did that, and we didn't make it all part of the same plan. But I do think it's, it's relevant to the issue. Um, and so I would say that that area, that seven-foot, uh, part of the, or piece of the lawn that we would be taking with the, uh, with the addition, um, isn't gonna change the character of the neighborhood. We're still gonna have a backyard there. Uh, I don't think it's, 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 it's gonna be unobtrusive. Uh, we've, you know, we really like the design of the house. I think it's a really, uh, handsome house, and I think this design uh, takes into account what the, uh, the, the look of the house is. It doesn't alter it in any, uh, significant way. So it will, uh, keep the character of the house, which is, you know, it's a, it's a great house, and it, it's a, um, you know, a handsome piece of architecture, so we don't want to interfere with that. Um, and then, uh, the area where the, where the addition will be, right now, there's a bulkhead that sticks out already about, you know, uh, maybe three and a half feet. Uh, and then there's a staircase in that area, so that area, the yard, isn't particularly usable anyway. And I think what we're gonna try to do is figure out a way so the bulkhead doesn't have to, um, stick out so far in the addition, so it really won't be, um, a significant pickup of two months. So, so i- i- it's just, uh, it's, you know, we, we love living here, we, we love the house, uh, and we just need a little bit more space, and that's what we're asking for.
Hi. So now that you have presented your case, we're wanting to ask a question, see if anyone here would like to speak in favor of your petition. Um, and we do, I want to point out that we do have a, um, a little petition attached to your application. I saw some names on there. Those were, um, Gregory Zahora, Judy Zahora, seventeen Simmons Road, Paul Bertrand, fifteen Baker Road, Evie Cardy, nine Simmons Road, and Jonathan Locke, twenty-five Baker Road. Um, I was able to read those, because they were typed, so sometimes I can't read them. Um, is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this application?
All right, and as an supporter, it put in the chat, as an supporter, we have no objection.
Okay, Miss Zahora, that, if you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Judy, Judy and Greg Zahora, seventeen Simmons Road.
Okay, and you also signed the petition, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Okay. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of this petition? Okay, hearing no one. Then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have to ask, we'll ask you some questions if we have any for us, and then we're going to add deliberations. So are there any members who have any questions for the applicant? I have one. Would you, would you, I see that you're not going up to a second floor.
No, it was.
Thanks to do that?
Not, no, not, not, not. It was, it was too complicated, and it would have really, I mean, I think one of the nice things about the house, you can't see it in the application, but there's a, there's a way the two gables intersect. And then there's, there's kind of a hip joint there, and it's really unusual. Uh, and it would really be difficult to, uh, it would, it would be difficult to do anything, uh, on the second floor without, well, without a huge expense. Um, and also without really changing the look of the house. Um, and also without really changing the look of the house.
Jocelyn, I, I take it you asked that, uh, maybe there's a restriction?
Yes.
I, I think we've been on the committee too long together.
Read my mind.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so. Well, then if we have no one speaking in our favor or against, and we have no more questions, we'll go into our deliberations. And that's when we speak amongst ourselves, and we'll let you know if you have any questions after that.
Okay.
So what do um, what do all the members think? Max, what do you think? David McCool, where are you?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it. I think it's a very modest request. Hundred and eighty-nine square feet, given the fact, you know, there's, you know, it's a family and the, yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's problematic, given the fact that they have support from some people in the local area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same way. I mean, this is not, this is not a case of somebody, you know, who owns a small house sudden, you know, or who buys a small house with family and children, and then comes to us and says, hey, you know, we bought this really small house with three kids and we just can't live here anymore, you know? This is a very modest addition. Uh, I don't see any substantial impact to the neighborhood. I don't see, I mean, as far as like even light and air, it's, it's, it's minimal. I mean, it's uh, yeah.
I would agree on this one.
I, I agree. I agree also. I don't see any problem with, with this petition.
It's like we used to get, is where people wanna build to the end of the lot and then up to-
Right, right. Um, I'm gonna make a, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, we have a finding that uh, this um, this project as presented is not uh, more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and-
I'll second that motion. David Walsh.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye. Max Casper, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay, do we have a motion to grant a permit?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that we grant a permit um, uh, as long as the um, project is builted, built, yeah, builted, built uh, as the plans presented, and that the addition cannot um, uh, the petitioners cannot come back to add a second story about that addition.
I'll second the motions. David Walsh.
Great, discussion on the motion.
Uh, just one question, I made the motion. Uh, the stipulation about adding a second story, how, how, does that go into perpetuity? Or is that a, like a thirty-year deed restriction?
I don't know. Do we wanna restrict it? I mean, I don't know. If you said it's a very modest addition and they said it was difficult to even do, I just ask for purposes of, you know, what's the plan here? Because sometimes they come back to us so quickly and-
I don't see any need for the restriction. If they wanted to go up in the future, they'd have to come back in front of the board, and the board could review it then. You know, why review, why review what we don't even know what it would be now? I would say just grant it and let time be.
All right, so- I agree with Max.
I agree with that.
So a friendly amendment to my own motion, is that, is that uh, legal?
Yes.
All right, um, so uh, I'm gonna remove the part about the, the limitation to adding the second story to the addition. So um, my motion would, would read, um, I make a motion that we approve the project as long as it's built as the plans presented.
Um, grant special permit?
For a special permit, yes.
And I'll, I'll do a friendly second.
Great.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye. Max Casper, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay, so Mr. and Mrs. Brooks, you have the, we've granted a special permit for you. And we will get everything filed within the next two weeks with the town hall. And then um, usually we do it on the last day. We try to do it sooner, but we're all volunteers. Uh, but usually it's much sooner. Um, so you get everything filed, then you have a twenty-day appeal period. Um, and you, normally you can't start any building until after that twenty-day appeal period expires, but you certainly probably get things ready. Okay, so you're all set.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So the next matter that we have before us, and today again, it's May seventeenth. We have the matter of one sixteen Willow Road. And the part, the, the, the uh, members that will be hearing one sixteen Willow Road will be myself, David Walsh, uh, David McCool, Michael Raworth, and Caitlin Kelly. So, uh, good evening, Mr. Jenkins. Hi, how, how are you?
Good, how are you? I've got Linda sitting next to me here.
Yes. Um, so what we're going to do is I'm going to read in the advertisement that was placed in the newspaper. I'm required to do that. I'll do as quickly as I can. And then there's a planning board letter that I do need to read into the record as well. And I know that you should have seen that, you should have seen it. I sent it over to your attorney. And normally, directly in the evening, I'll be speaking to your attorney. Where is he? Where is Steve Smith? He's right there, he's here. Um, so I'm just saying hi to you. We're gonna read this now, and then we'll get started, okay? So one minute, please. Okay, so today is May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And this is a public hearing, which will be held by the zoning board of appeals for the town of Nahat, uh, via remote technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the portion of the advertisements that applies to one sixteen Willow is the um, a public hearing on the petition filed by Carl Jenkins. Property located at one sixteen Willow Road, Nahat, Massachusetts, seeking a special permit or variance. The inspector of buildings has denied a building permit because the proposed garage is in violation of section five point oh three zoning bylaws of the town of Nahat, where the proposed lot coverage is thirty-three percent, where the uh, maximum allowed is twenty-five percent. The proposed Willow Road setback is three point nine feet, where the minimum allowed is twenty-five feet. And the proposed Intervale Road setback is two point two feet, where the minimum allowed is twenty-five feet. That's the advertisement that was placed. And um, I suppose who's going to be hearing the hearing tonight, and introduce everyone. So now what we're going to do is we're going to have uh, your attorney, we'll present the case for you. Then we will um, uh, hear from people speaking in favor and against. And after that, we will um, start deliberations and hopefully come to some type of a um, a decision this evening. But the next thing I have to do is to read the portion of, I'll read the planning board letter, the whole letter. They did make sense, we got a letter from the planning board. And the reason we get these, uh, Mr. Jenkins, just so you know, is that, unless your attorney told you or not, when we get the applications, we're required by law to send them to the other towns, or the, sorry, the other boards. And the other boards in the town, we view it. And if they have any comments, then they write us a letter, and then we read it into the record. So on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, I received this letter from the planning board, which will be on file. And it says here that, Dear Jocelyn, this letter shares the planning board's comments on the above-captioned appeal to the ZBA of the denial of the building permit by the inspector. We understand that the previous house, oh, that's the wrong one, that's two thirty-eight, I apologize. I do have one for you. The planning board notes, the driveway apron onto Willow Road is proposed, is extremely short. Cars backing out of the driveway would be into the street while still mostly in the garage. For safety reasons, we suggest either rotating the garage ninety degrees clockwise or moving it further into the lot. Respectfully submitted, the um, Town of Nahat Planning Board. Okay. So, Mr. Attorney Smith, if you'd like to get started on presenting your case?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, just a, a quick review of the information uh, that I hope the board has. They should have the application submission, submitted by the petitioners, uh, Linda and Kyle Jenkins. They should see a, a denial letter and a worksheet um, as provided by the building inspector. There should be a set of plans showing the footprint and elevation of the building, which is dated uh, two twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one. And a plot plan, um, a, a site plan, um, showing the proposed footprint of the proposed garage on the site. Uh, there was also a supplemental filing, uh, that would have been some revised elevation plans um, that you should, would have received today with the date of five eleven, two thousand and twenty-one. And a petition signed by neighbors who were, at that point, were in favor of the petition. And so uh, those are some of the documents I'll be referring to, uh, in addition to um, other information.
Okay, we've also received um, a petition that was filed by neighbors against the petition. So everybody wants, everybody's aware of that, and I forwarded all of that to the members. If any members don't-
I have that as well, and I appreciate you sharing that with me, thank you.
If any members don't have this information, then I can share my screen and show it to them. Um, all right, so why don't you get started, because we do have all of that information, that I, at least I do.
Okay, the subject property is one sixteen Willow Road. It's located at the intersections of Willow Road, Intervale, and Winter Street. It's in an R two residential district, or a single-family residential. Uh, it's occupied by a single-family dwelling and an accessory structure, which are both allowed um, in accordance with Nahat zoning bylaw. The owners, as it said, are, are Linda and Kyle Jenkins. They've owned the property for about a year. Those who um, have the opportunity to go by the site over the last year would see there were some extensive renovations that were occurring, uh, primarily um, in the interior of the building and preserved the exterior of the building um, essentially intact, and uh, and it's a beautiful home. The parcel i- is just uh, over eight thousand square feet, uh, non-conforming with the lot size. Uh, a- again, i- it's a corner lot, as is described by Nahat zoning, or, or a, a corner lot plus. Uh, most corner lots will have two front yards of twenty-five feet, two side yards of ten feet. Uh, this property is truly unique, and, and not any or many like it in town. Um, it has three front yards. It has a Willow Road front yard, it has a Intervale Road front yard, is, is a Winter Street um, front yard. Um, it goes from a hundred and ten feet wide on, on its border with its disney with the left, Mr. Ward. Uh, it comes down to a dull point um, at that four-way intersection with, with Willow, Willow, Intervale, and, and um, and Winter. There's a grade change. It, it goes from, if you wanna call it zero grade of being Willow Road, it increased in height from the front to the back of the property, from anywhere from six to ten feet um, as you go from the intersection uh, with Winter and Intervale, further up uh, on the Intervale frontage. Um, the existing structure, the primary structure, the dwelling, um, has a, a twen- a max, a twenty-three-foot front yard on Willow Road where twenty-five feet is required. On Intervale is somewhat less than six feet, where twenty-five feet is required. On Winter, uh, it's twenty-four to eighty feet, where twenty-five, twenty-five feet are required. The left side, uh, the reward property is three feet plus or minus, where ten feet is required. Um, the garage has a frontage, uh, a front yard of Willow Road, about eight feet, where twenty-five feet is required. Uh, Intervale is four feet, where twenty-five feet is required. In Winter is somewhat less than one foot, it, it bevels out to about eleven feet, where twenty-five feet require. Lot coverage is twenty-six, where twenty-five uh, is the maximum. A lot size, again, is eight thousand. It is in all respects a, a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. Uh, what's being proposed on the primary structure, no change at all. Um, what, what, the projects before the, the board tonight is to remove and replace uh, the existing garage. Um, the existing garage, approximately twenty-two and a half feet by fourteen. What's being proposed is more of a square structure. It's twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet. Front yard on Willow Road is gonna be about four feet, just over four feet, where twenty-five is required. Uh, Intervale, a little over two feet, where twenty-five feet is required. Uh, Winter, thirteen feet, where twenty-five feet are required. I readily concede those are small numbers. The existing structure is small number, a- and they're certainly comparable. And that is strictly a result, is as being a very odd triangular-shaped lot, uh, with that multiple street frontage. There's some thought given in, was given to what was being proposed and where it was being proposed. And, and if I remember, I'm, I'd like to respond to some of the issues that were raised by, by the planning board. There are traffic conflicts. Uh, anybody who's familiar with that neighborhood, I drive through that on the way home, um, several times a week. Um, there are traffic conflicts. Um, as you reach the bottom of the hill, there's traffic either entering or exiting from Intervale and from, from uh, down Winter Street, uh, from Willow Road, they're all two-way streets. Um, it's a four-way intersection, um, heading down towards uh, Willow Road. So the idea is to pivot the access to the garage away from that multiple-pronged intersection. Uh, and you look at the plot plan, you'll see that turning from directly onto that intersection more towards the frontage on Willow Road. Um, as a result, you'll see improved sightlines, particularly as you approach Willow Road, coming out of Intervale or down Winter, because there's a substantial hedge line along the Willow Road frontage that will, by necessity, will be removed. Um, the overall height of the structure is going to be reduced. It's a flat roof. Well, a flat roof structure could be as much as twelve feet high, um, with a pitch, it could be sixteen feet high. Uh, the maximum height of this structure is ten feet. The garage floor level is closer to Willow Road. The garage floor is actually being sunk about three feet below the existing garage floor of the garage that accesses on and off of the, the multi-pronged intersection. Um, the structure is being built into the grade. If you look at the architects' plans, revised architects' plans, which I, were intended to do two things, by the way. Uh, one was to add more uh, of the, the calculations for the height. So as you look at the uh, plans, walk around the building from all four sides, you have a better sense of what you're looking at, not just in terms of, of relative, but also in terms of numbers. Uh, and it also served to relocate um, a stairway that would be used to uh, access a proposed um, roof deck. And I'll get to that in a minute. Um, away from the left side, where it would be a higher number of stairs to access the top of the structure, to the rear would be a, a minimal number of stairs um, to access the top of, of the property. So i- if you look, you'll see the, the rear, the exposed height is about two and a half feet, uh, which is substantially lower than the existing building. Um, and as you get towards, towards uh, Willow Road, you'll, you'll see it goes from two and a half feet to seven and a half feet. So it's a reduced elevation structure um, uh, that you'd be seeing by what's proposed. Uh, the interesting concept is that there is um, a proposed roof deck. And, and the design of the roof deck was intended to be sensitive to preserving views or improving views for those who occupy and own surrounding properties. As a roof deck, it's a seasonal use, um, not, not a year-round use. There's a uh, a a rail system uh, to maintain safety. It's a wire cable rail system. Unless you're directly in front of it, you're not, your view will not be obstructed as looking through uh, that, the railway system uh, of the roof deck. Um, and relocating the access to stairways, as I said earlier, from the left of the full stairway to the rear, where we're only about three feet above grade, is gonna reduce the visual impact of any access to the roof. We are requesting the board's consideration of granting a special permit to allow the uh, proposed garage. Um, we're not adding any new non-conformities. As it's pointed out earlier, uh, this lot and its structures are non-conforming in all respects. We're not taking something that conforms and, and moving into a side yard, rear yard, front yard, uh, necessitating a variance. We're changing, uh, we're just looking to extend or alter the existing non-conformities. The standard, as you're well aware, is that the, the proposed structure should not be substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. We think there are sufficient facts for help the board to reach that finding. There are going to be reduced traffic conflicts. That's part of the purpose of relocating the garage and relocating the garage access. There are improved intersection sightlines, not just by the pivoting of the building, but also by removing some of the surrounding visual obstructions, like the, the green hedge. Um, we are increasing conforming off-street parking. The, the structure is twenty-four feet wide. Um, there will be at least two cars, gonna be accessed and reparked into this uh, garage. Decreasing the amount of off-street parking, whether it be for, used by others or for obstruction for flow in traffic. Reducing the height of the structure between the existing uh, garage. Uh, there's going to be a reduction in what you'd be looking at from any elevation as to the top of the proposed garage. There is no increase in traffic being proposed. It's a single-family home with an accessory structure. It will remain a single-family home with an accessory structure. There's no increase in density. We're not adding living space, we're not adding bedrooms, we're just adding off-street parking. Uh, and there'll be no increase in noise, other than that related to construction as a result of that. Uh, we think that those factors alone um, warrant a, a finding of these not substantially more detrimental than the existing garage structure. Some may uh, tend to wanna look at this as a variance. Uh, we think it also meets the criteria for granting variance, even though we don't think a variance is required. Um, the standard, as we rehearsed earlier this evening, and you've discussed in other uh, of your deliberations, is owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, topography, or shape, a literal enforcement would be, resulted in hardship, and relief can be granted without substantial detriment. The public good are nullifying the intent of the zoning bylaw. The circumstances relating to the lot, uh, as repeating myself, this is a corner lot. It is extremely unique. It's a angled, triangular, cornered lot. There are three front yards. With the, plus the, the triangular shape is clearly unique. A literal enforcement resulting in a hardship. Without any type of relief, um, the garage cannot be- the garage cannot be constructed anyplace on the lot without without creating any types of setback violations. The result would be no construction. Can relief be granted without substantial detriment? I would point to those same benefits that I believe take away from it being substantially detrimental to the existing structure. Reducing the traffic conflicts, entering and accessing not just the property, but the intersection of Winter, Intervale, and Willow Roads. Improving the sightlines, increasing off-street parking, reducing the height of the structure. No increased traffic density or intensity of the use. The planning board, I know, has weighed in on this. And unfortunately, we were not made aware that this was going to be discussed on the planning board agenda, or perhaps we would have had the chance to appear before them and answer some of the questions they're concerned. They talked about existing conditions. The result would be to back it into traffic. That's exactly what occurs under existing conditions. The only difference is we're hoping to make this safer by turning things away from the four-way intersection. So whatever access and egress solely on Willow Road would have decreased conflicts whether accessing or exiting the building. Pivoting the 90-degree turn, I'm assuming they mean turning the 24 by 24-foot structure further away from the intersection. So it's square or running, front is running parallel to Willow Road. There's a utility pole there. If you completed that pivot, you would have to have a relocation of a utility pole. Go take a look at what's on a utility pole. That's an obstruction. It's not going to get moved. That's not something that is practical to happen. And moving a lot, the structure further into the lot, I'm not sure what that means. But if it means moving it to the wider section of the triangular shape, I can tell you that can only be accomplished by removing what is probably the only mature tree on that section of Willow Road. It is not something that the property owner would choose to do. And so that is the summary of my presentation, and I'm hoping that the board might have some questions that either myself or I know that the applicants are present on the Zoom hearing as well, that we can answer for you or for anybody else who has an interest in the petition. Thank you. Madam Chairperson, if you're talking, I cannot hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
At this point, we're going to ask for people, anyone who would like to speak in favor of the petition.
Does that include me?
That includes you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Look, we've been a we've lived in this town for over 22 years. This is our third house. We've substantially renovated and restored. And we've never had issues with causing problems for neighbors, and I don't anticipate that being the case here as well. And I think, I think one of the things you're going to hear about is this roof deck as if it's going to be a party central. And I, with all due respect, we're in our old 60s. Our kids don't live in the area. We have a nice deck in the front of the porch, and we have a beach across the street. The purpose of the roof deck, one, is the reason why it's there is because we went with a flat roof to reduce the sightline of, and I should say improve the sightline to the beach to neighbors. There's no other good reason for a flat roof other than to do that. If we, but with a flat roof, without having a roof deck on it, it's going to look ridiculous. It's just going to, it's just going to look out, totally out of place, having some, what's going to look like some sort of bunker on the property. As far as pulling out into the road, I will tell you, backing out of that one-car garage, narrow one-car garage into an intersection with four roads, you just, the action involved in trying to do that, not to mention trying to pull in is ridiculous. And the idea of being able to pull out with, looking at traffic coming in fewer directions is, will be a treat. I will tell you that I think we've listened to our neighbors. We've done everything we can to lower the sightline, improve the site of, I'm sorry, lower the roof size, improve the sightline to our neighbors, which, which I think it's clear that that will be the case. So I'm, and getting cars off the road. I mean, one of the things on Intervale, if you ever come down there on a summer day, that road is packed with cars from all over on that road. And to the extent we've got additional cars on that road, it just makes, it just makes matters worse. So we'd like to get some more cars off the road, and I'm sure our neighbors would too. But there's only one side of that road that's available for parking, and that is within about six feet of our dining room. That's what we look out onto the road and we see the cars right there. So to be able to get cars into into the garage, I think, I think is a big, big plus for everybody. So that's, that's what I like to, I think.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the petition?
Madam Chairman, Attorney Premison.
If you could give me your, are you speaking on behalf of someone else? Do you live in the hot weather? No?
I am speaking on behalf of, I'm speaking on behalf of Paul and Michelle Lindsey, who are property owners and abutters. They reside at 18 Intervale Road. And also on behalf of Mark Harrell and Tracy Simpson, who are owners of a second abutting property located at 2 Winter Street. Rather than make a presentation of the opposition, with the board's permission, I would like to have each of my clients give you a brief indication as to their primary concerns, and then I would like to address the board with respect to some more technical variance types.
I think that would be okay. Anybody object to that? Hey, why don't you just, why don't the residents tell us what's on their mind?
Hi, good evening. Paul Lindsey, L E N Z I, 18 Intervale Road. Good evening. I guess, you know, a lot of good points have been made and will be made. I think I have three categories. The petition we submitted is signed by three abutters. One with 20-plus years, one with 30-plus years, one with 50-plus years, and these homes all next to each other on the property opposite of the Jenkins. I think it's also signed as a matter of interest by our past Chief of Police Billy Waters on 4 Winter Street. And also signed by somebody who had formally signed the Jenkins petition and after seeing more details in the plans, decided to sign in opposition. Second category of topic of discussion is safety. I agree with everything that's said. It's an unusual corner. I don't know how doing anything would make it markedly better. I think it might even create a new blind driveway for traffic coming down Winter Street, turning right into the, into the area where the garage bays would be. It's also very hard for us to tell exactly where it would be sited, both elevation and how it would interfere. And we'll get to views in a second with lateral views. It may also intersect or impede the existing crosswalk that goes across Willow Road to the Tudor Beach access stairs. And I don't purport to know what the laws are about location of driveways and crosswalks and moving them. You've already mentioned the planning board's recommendation. And then to views, obviously, this is the most sensitive thing for all of us living in our wonderful town. You know, it's very emotionally charged for all of us. They're precious and few. Both Mark and my properties look through the yard directly opposite of the Jenkins property. So sensitivity is obviously there. I think all I can say is I can't really tell what lateral changes there would be to views. The height, again, depends on final structure and the grade at which it is planted. And then last, the last item, as Carl pointed out, is the roof deck. For sure, the flat roof is lower. It has a, I think, a 42-inch railing on it. And I think, you know, when we imagine people being up there for any reason, that certainly further changes our view. And those are, those are the primary points. Thank you.
So why don't you hold on a second. While we're on you, I mean, is there something that, Attorney Smith, I mean, this is a simple question. Can you explain to the Lindsey's how, what the lateral change would be? In terms of height and what happens in the elevation? Where's the existing garage?
I mean, I can, I can answer that too. We certainly discussed it together, the Mark Harrell, myself, and Linda and Carl. And with Wayne.
A counsel, I want a counsel to say, Steve Smith.
What was the question again, please?
He's saying that, you know, he doesn't know what the impact of the view is going to be on his property. It's a simple question. Perhaps you could just answer that?
Well, I could answer it if I could share plans, and I thought there was some, you know, an onsite meeting where that was discussed. But if you look through the elevation plans that were provided by the architect, what it attempts to show clearly is a reduction in the overall height of the structure achieved primarily by sinking the garage floor below grade, close to the grade of Willow Road and building it into the topography. And therefore, if the building, if you're standing looking at a building at one height and it's, the building is lower, then your view would not be as obstructed as it would have been with the existing structure. So I, it's, it's better seen as a visual. And again, that was the purpose of those original plans. And by adding those numerics to the revised plan, it was, you know, attempt to kind of bring, you know, some, some numbers and some control into it. And I believe, I know the board has those, and I'm hoping that if not the neighbors, then their counsel has a copy of those revised plans as well.
Okay, so the revised plans, we do, I do believe we have those. We've got those today, correct, Stephen?
Yes, they don't change anything. They only add information. I'm sorry, they did change the location of the access stairway for the roof deck, but other than that, they don't change anything. They just add information that might be helpful in terms of.
Well, excuse me. This is Mark Harrell, 2 Winter Street. Director Butter, as Paul is, across the street with my wife Tracy Simpson. The plans that came out today, that we saw today, show a 10-foot height with a one-foot, roughly one-foot, maybe it's 10 inches platform, and then a 42-inch rail on it. Bringing us back to about 14 and a half, 14, somewhere in that vicinity. It's still, it's vague. Because we're not sure on the elevations how accurate they are because they, and not only that, the original plan that you guys were submitted at the original, that the planning board reviewed, showed 12-foot plus the 10 inches plus the, I think it was a 36-inch rail at that point. So the plan has changed. I'm not really sure which plan we're here to discuss. Is it today's plan? Is it the one that was originally submitted? I know that there, when, when we had the discussion a week or a week ago with Wayne Wilson, the builder, and he came down and he was, he was showing us that it was going to move. I think it's moving four, four to five feet towards the middle of the lot right now on an angle, which is going to block more of my view and more of Paul's view. Yes, it's a lower structure, maybe by a foot, and yes, the rail is going to be see-through. But, you know, see-through rails somehow become closed in. I mean, we've all seen it done. Hell, I've done it on my, on my deck. You know, wind blockage, what have you, wind screens. That's fine. But, you know, we're talking about, about the exact same. We're off maybe a foot, foot and a half over what we have right now. And one thing that wasn't discussed was the police chief did make a comment to you folks about reviewing the the site plan, seeing it onsite, because he's got some concerns about the Willow Road as well.
Because we'll talk about that when we get to our deliberations a little bit.
Okay, all right.
I just want to find out who else is here to oppose, and I was just asking a question of Attorney Smith when you chimed in. I want to hear from everybody first, and then we're going to take a look at the plans, and we'll do, ask our questions, and we'll do our deliberations.
Okay, so.
So hang on to that thought.
Can you just clarify one thing, though? Which plan are we discussing? The one that showed up today or the one that showed up three or four weeks ago, two weeks ago?
The one that showed up today.
Madam Chairperson, the exact same plan, and Mark, I know this is a difficult conversation to have over Zoom, much easier to have, both looking at the same sheet of paper, page by page.
When we're done, I'll share the plan for the whole board and everybody can see it, okay?
Okay.
So let's see, because it's going to be a long night if we let things go like this. Who's the next person who would like to speak in favor, or I'm sorry, in favor of the petition or in opposition at this point?
Well, I would, Your Honor, Attorney Premison. I believe you've heard from, from my clients. I believe they've finished making their remarks. I would just like to, to have the board consider the following provisions in the bylaw that I think are pertinent to this issue. Number one, yes, the plans keep changing, so it's, it's difficult. But it now appears that these stairs leading to the proposed roof deck, in one set of plans, they were on the, what's known as the left side of the garage. That is, the side of the garage that's closest to the applicant's home. In the second set of plans that we saw, those stairs were interior. There was a door from the yard into the garage, and then the steps leading to the roof deck were inside so that they were not visible to anyone. And then the third plan, which is what we received this morning, the stairs are back exterior, but they've been moved to what's known as the rear of the proposed garage, which is the side that faces Intervale Road and both my clients' homes. So that's an issue for them. Not only is the existence of a roof deck an issue for them, but also adding a view of an exterior stairway is a violate, it's not a violation, but it's a diminution of the, of the views that my clients enjoy. We all know that the, you know, it's no secret that the view we're talking about is the view of the ocean. And, and, and any diminution in that, even a foot or two, and as Mr. Harrell coincided, maybe four feet, is substantial to my clients. And the board should consider that when making this decision. The building inspector, of course, we agree, was correct in not issuing a building permit because of the non-conformities with respect to the size of the lot and the setbacks of the, of the garage. So, so I disagree with my brother's presentation, if I heard it correctly, that there are no increases to the non-conformities. There will be substantial increases to the non-conformities. The garage setback from, from Intervale will be still in violation, but it will be less in violation. But the, the front of the garage on facing Wilson Road will be further in violation of the setback rule. It encroaches more. So it's an increase in the non-conformity there. As we all know, without a specific bylaw relative to a special permit, if one owns non-conforming land and you want to build on it, you need a variance. Well, I would like to suggest to the board what might be a heretical thought. But this is not a reconstruction for which your bylaw on a special permit is applicable. And I'd like you to consider that this is a voluntary teardown and then a new building. And when you look at the project in that, from that perspective, which is, I think, the correct perspective, there's no provision for a special permit. The only permit you could issue would be a variance. We think that an alteration is defined a number of places in the, in the, in the bylaw specifically with respect to the dimensional regulations and in Section 7 with respect to the finding. But, but it always, the special permit provisions apply to alterations which are defined as a few things that this project is not, but also a reconstruction is considered an alteration. And my understanding is that a reconstruction. And my understanding is that a reconstruction is, occurs when a structure such as this garage falls into disrepair, is destroyed by fire, a disaster, and, and the owner wishes to rebuild the, and therefore reconstruct the formerly existing structure on the same footprint in substantially the same size, substantially the same character as the former structure. And so I differentiate, I think, I think this project differentiates from that, from that in that it's not a reconstruction. I would point out simply that there are a number of places in your bylaw, which, starting with the general section 1.03 and, and Article 908, the general purposes and intent of the bylaw ought to be considered when you're considering the grant of a special permit. And the protection of views, the protection of views is specifically cited in the bylaw at those sections as one of the purposes of the zoning bylaw, which would include one of the purposes of the issuance of a special permit or allowing a deviation from the existing dimensional requirements. My client's position is, is that you don't need to be an expert to know that if you lose a bit of your view, you lose a bit of your value. How much value? We don't know. But everybody on the board, I think, understands, and I'm sure the Jenkins and, and all the neighbors, both for and against, understand that if there's a change in the view, and we now have to look at some stairs and some railing and presumably some furniture and presumably some people, this is a substantial change in the view of the ocean that my clients currently enjoy. And, and we think that that change, well, it's, it should be taken into consideration that that has not been minimized and the petition should be denied on that basis. In the event that the board is inclined to allow the garage, my clients would ask that the board consider adding as conditions all the issues relating to the roof deck. That is, the stairs, there's no need for the stairs if there's not going to be a roof deck. And, and, and the roof deck almost appears to be another accessory use on the property. It's very difficult for me to figure out exactly what to call it. It's not a deck. It's not attached to the primary residence on the property. Not exactly sure what it is from a zoning perspective. But my clients would, would ask that the board consider putting a condition that no roof deck be placed and that, and therefore no stairs.
Alright, so at this point, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Before I just close that out? Okay, so at this point in the hearing, what's going to happen is we're going to talk amongst ourselves and we're going to ask questions of the applicants, if we have any. And then what I'd like to see is, I think, the board members, do you agree that, would you like to see the, the newest plan that we got today on, on the screen, so everybody can kind of talk about it for a minute? And perhaps you can address some of those concerns? Does everybody agree with that?
I think that would be helpful.
That would be good.
Okay, I thought it'd be helpful as well. Give me a second to share my screen properly, because I won't be talking about it before it's up like I did last time. Here we go. Okay. So Attorney Smith, can you tell us now, I think this is what we're talking about here for the most part, this particular screen? This look. Talking about?
Okay.
So Attorney Smith.
Yes.
First of all, would your clients consider not having the roof deck? Because they said early on, they only thought that would be more, look better. They did not necessarily want it necessarily. They said, didn't say that either. They just said it would look awful without that. That's one of the options that seems to be a problem.
Do you want to answer that right now or would there be further questions?
Look at the, look at the map, the plan there. Tell them, see if you can answer any of their questions.
If we were meeting in person, I would ask if I could meet with my client in the hall for five minutes and come back in and answer that or less. And I'm sure there's a way to do this on a chat room, but Zoom, but I've never done it. And.
Well, we did this, we know what we could do is it could take a five-minute break. We have been on this Zoom for two, two-plus hours now. You can speak to your clients and come back. You want to do that?
Yeah, is there anything else that might require similar type of discussion just for efficiency purposes?
Not that I know of. I mean, anyone in the board want to, anything else that you think might be, that he should talk to his clients about?
Just to confirm, Jocelyn, you're, you're proposing that the applicant forego both the roof deck and the stairs, correct?
I'm not proposing it. I'm just saying that's what, that's what their objection is. And if that's what he wants to complain about, then fine.
That's, that's what you were discussing as a, as a possible alternative.
Right. I just wanted to see what their thoughts were on that and have Attorney Smith explain how this, you know, I can see it looks like the same elevation for the roof deck railings as the current roof. Is that true?
Essentially, yes. So the roof deck is lower, the railing is at, you know, essentially the same height as the peak of the pitch roof, the existing garage.
Alright, so those are the choices. Do you want to take a break, talk to your client, or just keep going?
If, if I could, I'm going to mute. I'm going to go in the other room and make a phone call.
Okay.
Before, before you go, Steve, I just want to clarify something. Paul and I particularly are not just opposed to the deck. We're opposed to the, the change in the size of the garage. It's going from 14 by 22 to 24 by 24. That's a substantial increase and a huge, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's, it's going to block the, the traffic. It's going to block the sightlines. And I know that Carl and Linda tried to, to show me how it wouldn't, but it will. You're going to cut down five-foot bushes and they're going to put up a 12-foot wall. Do you, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's five-foot bush or a 12-foot wall. There's a big difference. And actually, it's not a 12-foot wall. It's got a four-foot deck, I mean, a four, three and a half-foot gate on top of it, or a rail, excuse me, on top of it. So I don't want you to think that it's the deck that's bothering us. Yes, the deck is a problem because that's going to just add more height to the whole process. Our concern is the change in the structure, the size. It's a big difference. You're almost doubling the size. You're bringing it down to Willow Road. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be huge on that corner. So I just wanted to clarify that. I'm sorry. I didn't mean, I know I'm out of order or what have you, but.
Could I jump in out of order then? Because the bushes are on the road. The, the building is not going to the road by definition. You, it cannot be blocking the same space. The building will not go right to Willow Road where the bushes are. You take the bushes out, the building has, there's, there's, there's distance between the building and the road then, which by the way, is now going to be open, which it isn't right now. So I disagree with you, Mark. I think, and, and having to pull out of that garage on a day, on a regular basis, that view will be a lot better. And, and, you know, so it's, you know, the, the rest of it, we can debate, but that one I don't think is fair.
I disagree, but okay, that's.
Okay, so let me do this then. Attorney Smith, do you want to take five minutes, talk to your client, come right back?
I'd appreciate that, if you could. Thank you.
Alright, so we're going to do that. We're going to stop the share. I'm just going to take, everybody take a five-minute break. Has been two-plus hours already. And we'll come back in five minutes, okay? It's 7:20 now. We're back at 7:20.
Okay.
Are you back yet? It's been six minutes. Waiting for Attorney Smith here.
Hey, Webb, can, are you looking at the chat, the private chat I'm sending you, sir?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know how else to get in touch. Thank you.
But I don't know how to respond to a private chat.
Okay, Attorney Smith.
Yes.
Get back. Okay, let's get back on with this hearing then. Okay, so where we are in the hearing right now is that we listen to people speaking in favor, people speaking in opposition, and we have some opposition that we're just trying to briefly see if we can sort out before we move on. And Attorney Smith, you would like to speak to your client? And what do you have to say?
I've, I've heard what the butters have said. I've sensed what the zoning board has said. I've talked to my client. I just wanted to emphasize that the concept of the roof deck was certainly not primarily geared towards another social, socialization area or function area that had more to do with aesthetics of, of putting window dressing on a, a flat roof than it did to create more, you know, additional outdoor, you know, entertainment space. The, the applicants are more than willing to forego the railing, the roof deck, the access stairway to, and to the extent that that benefits the neighbors to any incremental amount and preserves their views and certainly would be agreeable to that change.
I think that's a, that's a lot of progress. Is there anybody, Webb, Attorney Premison, is something that you think that you would like to discuss with your client, maybe? This isn't a mediation, but I mean, we'd like to see things be resolved. We don't want our people being sued here.
I appreciate that, Attorney Campbell. No, I don't think there was anything. We, I think we made our position clear. I, I would simply ask that if, when the board deliberates with respect to specific plans, if that's what you're going to do, that you identify the plan you're looking at so we can all follow it. In the lower right-hand corner, there's like an A10, A20, A30. And I wasn't sure when you put a particular plan up on the screen before the recess, which plan it was that you were looking at. So I'd just like you to do. So I'd just like you to do that, to make it clear.
Okay, let's, let's make that really super clear. This is the plan. And Attorney Smith, could you just confirm that this is the plan that you sent in today? I want to share the screen with you, with everyone, so you can see it, before we want to make sure we're really correct about this. 116 Willow Road, do you see this plan, Attorney Smith? Is this the correct one?
If we don't want, seems to have, we should have revision date of 5/11/21. I can't read that on your screen.
Yes.
I can on mine, but it certainly appears to be one and the same.
It does say 5/11.
If you go back to page one, based on, on the provisions for the stairway to the rear, that only appeared on the plans that were provided today. It wasn't on any previous plans.
Okay. All right, so those are the plans that dated revision 5/11/21. All right, so let's, we're going to move on.
May I just clarify, clarify one other thing? Maybe I, maybe I missed it, but all I have is in terms of a plot plan to show the footprint of the proposed structure is the, one dated March 11th, 2021 by Brown or North Shore Survey Corporation.
That has not been revised.
All right, so the footprint is the same. The principal difference in the, the new drawings is that the, the elevation is diminished. The baseline from which the garage is going to be built has been reduced in profile. Is that right?
And the, and the stairway you see on the footprint to the left would be eliminated.
Right, assuming there's agreement to that effect. Okay.
And so, that's actually a good question, because I really wasn't sure myself, Michael, like when I looked at the plan, like how far, how much further in would it be? I guess it's.
Well, my understanding is the, the footprint has not changed in the most recent revision. So we're looking at the, the footprint at all times as depicted in this, this eight and a half by seven, or 11 by 17 drawing.
Is that one there?
Yeah. Stamped by the town clerk, April 15th, 2021.
That's correct, okay. All right, that's perfect. So let's move on, the perfect meaningness we have it, that's what I mean by that being perfect. Not the plan is perfect. We have heard from both sides in terms of opposition and those in favor, and we've asked some questions. Now it's time for us as a board to get together and deliberate, and we may ask further questions of the parties.
So my understanding is the, the principal, principal issue that we're dealing with here is the impingement on the views of the neighbors. In other words, nobody, there's nobody has, who has a property line that is, if you will, squeezed by the lack of conformity with the setback requirements. There's, there's streets instead of property lines that are affected there. So while it still may be a non-conformity, it has less of an impact on anybody who's adjoining or abutting. And I gather that the, that leaves basically the, the, if you will, the effect on the, on the, on the visual horizon of the neighbors. Is anybody understanding things differently than what I just said?
Sounds to me like what we're looking at is about the same height, but it's going to maybe even be a tiny bit lower, especially without the roof deck. And then also, but you've got more, a little bit wider map, it sounds like.
Correct. So, so in other words, it sounds as if there's, there is a trade-off, because the maximum height of the, of the currently proposed structure without the roof deck is lower by the amount of the roof deck than the existing garage. Now, of course, the, the part of the garage, the existing garage that's higher than the proposed garage without the roof deck is in the form of a peaked roof rather than a block form. But it is, I mean, if you will, it's trading some, some existing height visual impact for some proposed width impact. And if I'm wrong about that, I'd appreciate somebody could correct me.
Is, are you deliberating, or can, can I ask a question or speak?
Ready now, so we're just going to talk amongst ourselves a few minutes, and we'll get back to everybody. What do the other members think? Dave Walsh, Caitlin, David McCool?
I was just saying, I agree, the old garage is 14 by 22, the new garage will be 24 by 24, so obviously you're adding, could disrupt views with. I think the biggest thing I heard, because I was concerned about that, as far as hearing about neighbors and their opposition, were, obviously we heard opposition to that, that the size is something that people are opposed to. But it's important, I think, that there is also some, it sounds like, benefit to that in that it'll be taking some cars off the road and making it so that that area is potentially easier to access and park in. Because I think we have to consider whether the hardship is created by the project, right? And the hardship that's created is really the blocking of views, but does that also benefit the area as well?
It also reduces the, the height profile in terms of the, the views.
Is, is this?
Yeah.
Can we talk?
Walsh.
Yes.
Not right now, we're, we're busy.
Can we talk?
Sorry, man.
No?
Not right now.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to respond to something that Caitlin just said.
We're talking amongst ourselves, we're deliberating, so we need to.
All right, I'll, I'll be.
And we'll finish, when we finish, if you have any more questions, we'll let you know. All right, so next, Dave Walsh and David McCool, do you have any comments?
Yes. Yes, I mean, I think as presented, it's, you know, it alleviates sort of a safety issue backing out of the driveway. There's an existing structure there, and they're sinking the grade to not, you know, to lower the height. So, I mean, no, I know the roof deck issue, but if they're willing to eliminate that, I mean, I have no problem with it.
I, I agree also. I think the, you know, there's give and take here. Yes, the garage is bigger, but it's a lower profile, and it will both improve the parking on, on the streets, and it will allow for better ingress and egress from the garage to the street. Certainly safer.
So if this were not, you know, a waterfront property, it would probably be like, like the hearing we just had on Simmons Road, I mean, it would be minimal change, right? But because it's waterfront, we have to deal with the viewer, and we have to be concerned about that. Okay, so, does anybody want to make a motion? And did anybody have any more questions for any of the applicants of the, of the party that they want?
I think, I'd be interested in, I just want to hear what Mark has to say, because he's obviously looking to say something.
Right, and I apologize for being rude, but.
No, you weren't rude.
Excuse me?
You were not rude, you just misunderstood.
Um, the one thing that Carl mentioned, and then Caitlin, you referred to it, was the parking, getting cars off the street. They currently have, it's a one-car garage, they have a parking, they have a driveway next to it, and then they park cars in front of it. So they have three cars, and they have three cars that are off the street, if they wanted to. They don't, I mean, they, they park on the street just everybody else. I'd rather look at their cars than everyone else's cars. And I'm sure Carl feels the same way. His cars are a lot nicer than most of the people that come and go to the beach here. But, I, I mean, so it's not really getting cars off the street.
But it's.
It is, I mean, you can say that, but the truth of the matter is, there's plenty of parking right now.
There is one garage space, the other one is next to the garage at a four-corner intersection. When the snow gets plowed, I get snow piled from, and you know this, from four different directions, and when it melts, it all rushes down both Intervale Street and Winter Street, right into the driveway. So I actually can't get my cars in and out of there. If I, if I, if I put one in front, as you say, if it snows, I'm screwed.
No, you know what, Carl, it's just like the rest of us, you have to go out and shovel your driveway when it snows. So it's, it's no different. I mean, I watched, I've lived here for 50 years, I've watched, you know, Tim, Tim McGuire go out there and shovel the cars out when his daughter was there, and he was there, and his wife, three cars has always fit in their driveways. So I'm not, I'm not gonna, we can't do that, so. I just wanted to clear that up. It's, it's not just a parking issue, there's plenty of parking now.
I was just trying to. Frozen cotton.
Right, I got you. Thanks.
Okay. We try to give everybody a chance, but when we're deliberating, it was just a procedural issue, as we're supposed to.
I understand, I apologize.
That's okay, that's all right.
Are we still deliberating, or one last word?
We're deliberating, but if there's somebody else who wants to speak, why don't we go ahead, just go and tell us what's on your mind.
Yeah, really, really briefly, I, I just want to understand if, if we're, if we're, if you're deliberating on the original plans or potentially with concession restrictions in perpetuity, you know, I think our, our position originally was no change, and it seems to have taken a, a shift towards compromise. We're, we're concerned about views all around. Just want the board to be able to consider that.
It's, it's just.
So you know, we've already mentioned it, I'm not sure, maybe you didn't hear part of it, but we, we're talking about the plans dated 5/11th and the ones that I showed on the screen.
Okay.
Right.
So I.
Madam Chairman, can I put, uh, put in two cents worth or a penny and a half worth?
Of course.
I, I thought I heard comments from the board members that they thought that moving the front of the garage from its current location to Wilson Street would be safer. And my clients obviously disagree with that, as does the planning board, as, as apparently does the former chief of police. If, if I'm approaching this, this intersection at the triangle from Intervale or Winter Street, I'm slowing down, because I'm coming within five or 10 feet of, of a cross street, a major cross street, of Willow. So I'm slowing down. A, a car backing out, Mr. or Mrs. Jenkins backing out of their, of their driveway, it doesn't present that big of a hazard, because I'm going very slow. If on the other hand, I'm making a right turn from there onto Willow Road, where I'm proceeding from, not from, not from the area of the golf course, but the other direction, which I guess would be north, if I'm coming toward, towards this intersection and towards Mr. and Mrs. Jenkins' house on the right, and they're backing out of a driveway, they're, to put it bluntly, the ass end of their car is going to be in my lane. I'm driving 25, 30 miles an hour, or, or even 20 miles an hour. That kind of, the, the back end of that car is going to be in my lane before they can see whether or not a, a car is coming. So I, I'm not suggesting that they're not safe drivers, I'm, I'm just suggesting that it seems to me that it is not safer to, to have this, the access to this garage on Willow than it is where it is now.
I, I think I deserve an ability to, right to respond to that. And, and counselor, when somebody's coming down Intervale Street, heading towards Winter Road, when drivers are on the right side of Winter Street, zooming down Winter Street, people on Intervale look which way? They look to the left to see cars coming down. They don't look to the right to see who's coming out of a garage. So you look up to the left, oh, there's no car coming, I continue my turn. And they're doing that at whatever speed you want them to be doing that, that's natural. You don't look to your right, you look to your left. I'm pulling out of the garage right there. And, and, and that, and that doesn't count the people coming on Willow Road, making that speed turn, making the left, which, which, as I'm pulling out, the same thing. I only have, that, I have two less ways to look when I'm pulling out onto Winter Street, by the way. And that's all I'm pointing out, that's got to be safer by definition. So I appreciate you may not take that drive, but I do. And, and I could tell you what it's like pulling out of that garage.
So, where we are now is that we need to decide, we either deliberate, finish our deliberations and come to a decision, or if, if anybody has any other options. Dave Walsh, what do you think? This is the longest-serving member here.
What oldest, is that what you said? I mean, I, I mean, some, some of these arguments, people, people drive back out of driveways all over town, everywhere. I mean, that, that really is not a major issue. I mean, all along Willow Road, people back out of their driveways onto Willow Road. And I don't know that we've had many crashes, so. Speed limit's only 25 anyways, and nobody ever goes over the speed limit that I know of. So, I mean, I, I think the concession of taking the deck off the, off the garage is, is, is quite a concession. I think that, you know, having a garage that you put two cars in is probably better than the conditions that are there right now.
Excuse me, can I say something, actually?
I agree with David Walsh, and, yeah, I mean, that's a big concession, remove that roof deck, and, you know, I'm inclined to improve it. You know, if they're, they're willing to make that concession, I'm willing to improve the rest of the project.
I would suggest that this is a, a balancing matter, and, you know, we, we've got to make a judgment in terms of the trade-off, and it seems to me that the, that the trade-off is, is an acceptable balance.
Can I actually say something? This is Michelle Lindsay.
Of course, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. There's actually two things I want to say, and, and number one is I was taking something to the town hall earlier, and I went around that corner, and it isn't the first time this has happened to me, I almost got hit by a truck. That corner is incredibly dangerous, and adding anything to that is going to make it very, very scary. But, but that isn't my only thing, we're all talking about this, but, but one of the major issues is that we're talking about putting up a 24 by 24 structure. And if you look at it from the angle of Mark's house, Mark and Tracy's, and our house, we're losing a significant amount of our view. And I know it's not always about the views, but this, this is why we live here, this is our home. I mean, we've been here, you know, 21, 22 years, and a hardship, it just doesn't seem like that's been established. So I just wanted an opportunity to say that. It, it's, um, it's a really big deal for us.
Okay, remind me again, which, which house is yours, because I, you told me earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're at 18 Intervale, we're right across the road from them.
Okay. I was over there, I'm asking a question, isn't your property raised up a little bit higher than theirs?
A little bit, but what's happening is, it's, it will, it, we're losing the view through their yard, because they're going to put this big structure in there. I mean, also with the concern of, you know, that there's the roof gap, and I don't know what's going to happen ultimately in the future. But what was happening is that was going to add a lot of height to it, and then, of course, you're going to have people up there, and, and it's like, right, we've already talked about all this, I'm sorry. I just, um, we're going to lose a significant amount of review, that, that's upsetting me, and also that corner has scared me since I've moved here.
Let me, let me just make a point here, I think, the, the new garage structure will actually be lower than the present garage, because the present garage has a roof on it, is that correct?
As a peak roof.
Longer, so.
Longer, but not, but not higher.
No, you're correct, it's, it's not higher.
It's not higher, we'll, we'll have the same view over.
It's wider.
But it's so much wider that we're losing a significant portion. And I just don't understand the.
You're going to get more view over it, which you don't have now.
Right.
I'm sorry, I don't.
It's geography, you have to.
It is not true, we're not getting more view.
It's geography, you have to get more view.
You're saying that, and that's.
If the roof is lower.
No, no, this has been your, your, you know, your reasoning behind it, but you're saying like you're doing us a favor, you're not really, you're taking space and our view. And this is why we're all here, and this is why it's so significant to us.
I understand, but this is why we're compromising.
It isn't doing us a favor.
This is why we're compromising, this is why we're lowering the roof.
Just saying.
That's exactly why we're here.
Give us a better view, you're, you're taking away our view.
I, I, I can't agree to that.
Okay, so.
So, I, I move that we make a finding that the proposed garage without the, the roof railings and without the stairway is not substantially more detrimental.
I will.
Yes, I second the motion.
All right.
Is that seconded by Peter Barber? No, no, sorry, Dave Walsh.
Yeah, that's fine, yes.
Yeah.
And any discussion on the motion?
Do we?
All in favor?
Do you have the conditions?
Want to say something?
David, David Walsh, hi.
Are the conditions?
Are there conditions?
The, the conditions are that without, without the roof railings, without the, the roof stairs, in other words. I'm sorry, and what?
And then otherwise as proposed, as far as width?
Correct, yes.
Yep, wouldn't that come in the second motion?
Correct.
Well, we can, yeah, we can have it, have it, have it in both.
I'll do one.
But I did clause it in what I first proposed.
First, we have to make the finding, which we just did, and I'm sorry, we didn't finish the vote, I don't think. I said any discussion on the motion, and then I heard from some people, but there was a little breakup. So I need to hear all.
David Walsh says aye.
David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Jonathan Campbell, aye. Now, the, we need a motion for the permit.
I'll move that we grant the permit for the garage, and specifically saying that there cannot be a deck on the garage in perpetuity. They cannot come back to the board to add a deck at a later time.
Or a stairway.
Or a stairway.
And is that for a special permit, David?
That's correct.
Second.
And so you think that we can do that for an accessory building because I just want to have, is ready discussion on the motion. We do that for with a special permit where it's an accessory building, which is, we need to make a finding that the accessory building is part of the residence and the structure.
Why would we, why would we be less able to clause the granting of a special permit as to an accessory building than than to a main building?
Well, I believe we can because I believe that it's part of the property itself, the accessory building. We've actually dealt with this before, and I think we should make a finding to that effect at some point.
I would be happy, I would be happy to do it, but I'm not following what it is that you think is in is called for.
Okay. Well, is the accessory, does it apply to special, in other words, if we can make in a, under Bellata, for example, right? We can make a, I'm not going to bother sharing that too late. We can grant a special permit, a variance is necessarily required, when we're extending, modifying, or existing a nonconformity in a single or two family structure. But this is not a single or two family structure, it's a, an accessory building. So, but is it part of the residence is what I'm trying to ask. And I believe in our definition, in our bylaws, it says that the accessory building is part of it. So, Dave Walsh, what do you think? Do you want to, should we check that?
I think we could do it this way. I don't, I don't know. Are you suggesting that it should not be a special permit and that it should be a variance because it's an accessory building?
Right. That's what I was wondering if we should talk about that, because I wasn't a hundred percent sure about that. I'm pretty sure, I remember seeing something to that effect.
I cannot, I cannot remember which which it is.
So are you saying that this would be solved, Jocelyn, by a motion to to make a finding that the garage is is a portion of the of the main building?
Well, I'm not sure we need a motion, but I guess I wanted to talk about the definition and whether it applied.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that there's anything that we can do or ought to do that's going to make a difference. Either we're within our powers to to act as has been proposed or we're not. And if somebody feels that we're not, then they may bring a proceeding accordingly.
Right. We want to avoid that if we can. I'm just trying to just take a minute to look at this, just give me a minute, I want to take a look.
Sure.
Definitions and see if I can't find it. All right. I need a little haystack right now, but. We actually dealt with this one other time. Something very similar. So bottom line is, whether or not we feel as though we can get a special permit under these circumstances, or whether we want to provide for a variance, whether we have enough information here to provide for variance. And that's the question. We've had some discussion on the motion. Why don't we just take a vote and move on? So all in favor?
Okay, there is a motion before us, and we need to act on that. But are you saying that, I hadn't even understood that you were contemplating a variance. So are you suggesting we act on it as a special permit and then double back and do it as a variance as well?
Michael, we need to act on the motion that's before us, and so what we're doing just now is discussing the motion, discussing discussing the motion. We don't always have a discussion, but in this case, I just was questioning it because I wanted to look for the definitions, and it's getting late.
Right.
So at this point, we have a permit, an application, sorry, we have a motion before us, David, and would you, would you mind reading it again?
Okay. I move that we grant a special permit for the garage as designed without any stairs or deck on it in perpetuity.
And who's seconding the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye, David Walsh.
David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Jonathan Campbell, aye. Okay, so we've granted a special permit with restrictions, and that will take about two weeks to get filed, and then we will have a twenty day appeal period, and then after that, you'll be all back.
I'm making motion readjourn.
Will before you adjourn, will we be notified?
What's that? Sorry.
Will we be notified when the when the appeal period starts?
Yes. We're going to get copy of the appeal.
And that will start, it will start ten days from now, is that what you said?
No, we typically file our decisions in about two weeks.
Yeah.
And then there's a twenty day appeal period after that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's your turn with David Walsh?
I'm making motion readjourn.
I'll second the motion. David McCool.
All right. Any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Mike Raworth, aye.
Caitlin Kelly, aye.
Jonathan Campbell, aye. I look at anyone.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right.